City councillors, ladies and gentlemen, Lord Provost.
Good evening, everyone. This is City Council. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera to see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the Councillor's Code of Conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I will now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now take a roll call for the minute and we'd ask if members would confirm that they are present when I call their name. Hey, Lord Provost.
Present.
councillor Alexander.
Good evening, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Anderson.
Good evening, I'm here too.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdall.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Thank you councillor Ellen Akla.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Hunter.
Present.
Thank you councillor Lynn.
Present.
Thank you Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Rome.
Present.
Bailey Sors.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Short.
Here.
Thank you councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland. Councillor Tolland.
Sorry, sorry, I couldn't get my mic off. Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, thanks very much. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Cookshank.
There's apologies in.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Finnegan.
Present.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor Curvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here.
Thank you councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Thank you councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Thank you councillor Creighton.
Good evening.
Thank you councillor Duncan.
Here.
Thank you. Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Now we want the first item, Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, there are two items of business this evening. Firstly, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Are the minutes agreed? I see nothing in the chat, so the minutes are agreed. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Item C, general business. Appointment: Vice Chairperson, Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board. It is reported that the term of office of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board will come to an end at the October meeting of the Joint Board, whereupon the role of Vice Chair will revert to a Dundee City Council member of the Joint Board. The council's instructions are requested with regard to this appointment. For the information of elected members, the council's current members on the Joint Board are councillor Lynn, councillor Tolland and councillor McHugh.
Thank you, Roger. I'm looking for any nominations and I see in the chat, Will, please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. I'd like to nominate councillor Lynn, please.
Councillor Lynn has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? I don't see any other nominations and I see councillor Alexander happy to form on the second. Thank you, John. Okay, is this nomination agreed? That's agreed. Thank you very much. That's the business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lord Provost. The next meeting is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee.
Good evening and we'll just go on with the business. Veronica, will you take us through, please?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I'm not seeing anybody indicating, so we'll move on.
Item two, Dundee local policing area quarterly police report, 1st of April to 30th of June 2022.
Ross, are you taking us through it today?
Hi, convener. It's Phil Davidson here. I'll just give a brief introduction if that's okay.
Yeah, fine. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, convener. And good afternoon, everybody. It's great to see you all again. I think, as mentioned at the last meeting, the quarter one police report is presented at committee today in fairly quick succession after our last presentation in August, and that was in order to get the reporting schedule back onto track. So I'm grateful for the committee's flexibility in this regard and in hearing us today. For information and as indicated by the convener there, I am joined today by Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, again, who is known to pretty much all of you and is our local area commander for Dundee, and has also indicated the report we are presenting today is our quarter one report for the period 1st of April 22 to 30th of June 22, and that is against the comparative period from last year and against our five-year average. The report, as always, provides performance update and contextual information against the local police plan, and it also shows linkages into the national police objectives as well as supporting the Dundee community plan. And as per last quarter, I would again advise members that we continue to see that the impact of the coronavirus pandemic in terms of year-on-year comparisons become challenging due to the varying levels of restrictions that have been in place at different times over the past couple of years. So I just continue to ask members bear that in mind as we clearly go through the report. Otherwise, I don't intend to say anything further in my opening introduction. I would save that for Ross, who clearly has got the greater local context, and I'll pass over to him just now to give you a brief summary of the report highlights and then we will both be happy to take any questions as always. Thank you.
Thank you. So good evening, convener and councillors. Just to touch on the violence and disorder figures first then. The statistics are provided at the start of the report, so from Q1, we see a slight increase in our serious assault occurrence rate, so of three crimes in comparison to the previous year. We've seen that start to kind of come back in line with previous year's statistics as Q1 kind of faded into Q2, and that remains below the five-year average, which is positive. Similarly, in terms of robberies, the initial quarter, a slight increase on the previous year. But again, as we've moved into Q2, that's actually been reversed to now just shy of 10% less robberies year-to-date than we were at this stage last year. Just touching on the detection rates, you will note that they are slightly lower in Q1 for both serious assaults and robberies than we would like. However, that is primarily down to the complexity of some of those investigations, which takes some time to conclude. So detection rates for serious assaults and robberies are now, as we speak, sitting at 75 and 76%, respectively, which is much closer to where we would like them to be into the kind of high 70%. Touching on common assaults, again, a slight increase across Q1 with that lag in detection rates, which is similar to serious assaults and robberies. But again, an improving picture around common assaults as that percentage has narrowed and we're now within with one percentage kind of point of our kind of previous year-to-date statistics around common assault. Just to pick out the emergency service assaults, an improving picture there. You may recall until last year, we saw a fairly significant increase in the number of assaults on emergency service workers throughout the year. And Q1 has started with a slight reduction and that's continued into a 15% reduction overall as we move into Q2. A slightly more challenging picture in terms of acquisitive crime, which I've touched on in the main body of the report. Dundee following national trends around increases in acquisitive crime in terms of both house breakings and motor vehicle crime. And as I've alluded to in the Q1 report, a very similar trend to that seen in Q4, where specific crime series linked to commercial premises and involving the theft of motor vehicles to commit further crime remains an issue. And again, small numbers of offenders committing kind of bulk crime in that area. So real concerted efforts by colleagues in CID and our community investigation units to target those responsible, and also work by our community policing teams, both in schools and local communities, trying to really reinforce the kind of prevention messages that go around all of that crime activity in order to try and suppress crime rates as we look through the rest of the performance year. In terms of road safety, I'll now go through the full gamut of statistics there. However, of course, the important ones for me are around our kind of injuries linked to road traffic collisions. And again, a leave kind of positive picture in terms of reductions in terms of road casualties through the early part of the performance year, which is very welcome. Moving into public protection, our group two sexual crimes, noting a decrease of 16% in terms of reported crimes, which again is positive in terms of a number of fewer victims this year in comparison to last when looking at year-to-date figures, and particularly the crime of rape where a 20% reduction has been seen with positive detection rates linked to that crime type. Lastly, around drug supply, again, a similar trend to Q4 in terms of reducing numbers of drugs being seized and those possession statistics becoming kind of more ingrained and steady across the board. Again, no complacency there in terms of the amount of stop and search activity being done as we try to support those who are struggling with drug addiction and target those who are seeking to profit from their vulnerability. So that's in terms of the formal statistics. Just moving into the antisocial behaviour space, just to pick out the key points for Q1. In Locky, particularly a huge amount of activity delivered in Q1 around Locky Maltese and also Locky High Street, refocusing on antisocial behaviour linked to drug abuse in public spaces, which has been a real particular problem in those areas. Again, the results of the Locky community policing team under the direction of Inspector Martin Pate and Sergeant Sean Petrie are embedded in the report and hopefully you agree, some really kind of positive work to try and make improvements in that area. In Q4, I did touch on the fact I would report on Grotty Ferry in this quarter as well. So we have done that review around that spike in antisocial issues, well-recovered in the media in Q1. Pleased to say that we saw that initial spike and have actually seen a very quick deterioration in occurrence rates, which have again have not been seen since. So that positive kind of proactive approach undoubtedly making an impact in that area. And as I've touched on in the report, I think the level of antisocial behaviour in Grotty Ferry compared to the rest of the city sits around that kind of 5% mark, which is demonstrating that there's not been a persistence in those really high levels of antisocial behaviour complaints that we saw earlier in the year. But again, no complacency around that. And we've now moved into that approach of getting into our schools as they've kind of come back after the summer term to really dig into that kind of educational aspect, discussing the impact of that kind of behaviour through the summer on local residents and looking for cooperation and understanding to try and prevent a recurrence as we move into kind of later school holidays and to the start of next year. So that's probably the main parts of the report that I would like to pick out this evening. Clearly, the report is all there for you and more than happy to take any follow-up questions that you may have for us.
Councillor Duncan, page 3.1 question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. And I'm looking at the summary of the report, that's page 11 of these committee papers. There's quite a few remarkable statistics in there, but the one that I'd like to pick on is the under-acquisitive crime, the motor vehicle crimes, which seems to have gone up by almost 130%. Now, I think I heard during the briefing that this is indicative of a national trend and I'd really like to draw your attention, like page 31 of the committee papers, where as regards Dundee, vehicle crime per head of 10,000s population seems to be very well above the national average. So I'm looking for a bit more information on that and also a bit of reassurance about detection rates, you know, and any measures that people can take to secure their property.
Thank you very much. Councillor, that'll maybe just briefly touch in on the national perspective and where that sits and then I'll pass over to Ross, who can give that perspective around about the Dundee specific response. Certainly, what we are noticing across the country is that motor vehicle crime is on the up this year. It is a trend across the country, as you've indicated, that there does seem to be a slightly higher proportion of that per head of population in Dundee. And what we've done in terms of analysis of that is a recognition that there, as Ross had indicated in his opening, a high proportion of these offences are attributable to a small number of repeat offenders. So we do have an element of a problem profile with some, you know, a small group of individuals. So the key focus is primarily around those. There are a number of crimes that remain under investigation and we clearly have positive lines of inquiry in respect of those which would help to give a positive impact into the detection rates. In terms of the proactive space, then very much there are a number of these that are opportunistic crimes, which is where there's high-value items left on clear and visible display within vehicles. But there are also those that are more targeted, where they are subject on the back of break-ins to houses and true keys taken as well as the vehicles. But I'll pass on to Ross, who can give that greater local perspective for you, just for the assurance that you're after. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just to build on that point around the kind of national averages. So it is clear that when we look at the national averages, we're focusing on our major cities. And the major cities across the board tend to have that higher rate because these crime series are kind of centred on streets and we'll see multiple crimes committed over the space of the same evenings, which is perhaps not quite so prevalent in the more rural areas. So Dundee being high, of course, is a concern, but as I say, in terms of that national picture, it is also seen in other major cities with them sitting much higher than our kind of more rural areas. And just digging into our approach, I think firstly in terms of the investigative side, we're working hard with colleagues in our kind of contact command and control space to make sure that any reports of acquisitive crime are getting that across to us and that we can get out there and maximise our opportunities around kind of forensic capture CCTV and door-to-door. We do tend to find the faster we can deliver the investigations into that kind of crime, the more success we're likely to have. So that's a real focus for us at the moment. And behind that initial attendance sits our kind of detective inspectors for our locality areas working kind of hand-in-hand with community investigation units to make sure we've got that kind of specialist investigative resource and really focused in on those offenders that are committing the largest numbers of those crimes so we can really target our resources to the right people in order to try and suppress that crime type as much as we can. And again, aligned to the investigation side, obviously after dark and based on kind of components of our prevention plan as the year goes through, but at the moment to give you an understanding. Every commercial premises and every dwelling, house sector, housing receives a crime prevention visit from colleagues in our kind of preventions and partnerships team the following day that that's reported to try and assist the individuals who have been victims to target hardened premises and ensure they are not vulnerable to repeat offences. And in addition to that, you then go out and target the kind of neighbourhoods around those crimes with leaflet drops, trying to remind other local residents to be kind of very, very aware in terms of security of, you know, buildings, vehicles, et cetera, as we go. So that's the kind of wraparound that comes in the aftermath of a crime. And of course, we've got that more kind of generalised kind of prevention piece through our social media channels and through other partner agencies that push out that messaging on our behalf to a range of kind of community groups and members. So that hopefully gives a kind of a whistle-stop tour of our approach. What I would say is we are, we do struggle with offenders who are on bail orders at the moment and difficult to secure remands for acquisitive crime, which means arresting away of the problem to bring these crime series to an end is a challenge without a doubt. But we absolutely are persevering with that and using the proactive opportunities that come from managing kind of community bail orders, curfew bail conditions, et cetera, to try and really work proactively to target the right people. So that's the kind of position we're in just now, but not to take a step away from the fact that the statistics are stark and that there's a lot of hard work to be done.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much indeed for that fulsome explanation. Because as you say, the statistics, if you at first glance, are indeed stark. But I appreciate what you're saying, that some of this can be explained by the urban versus rural trend. And also, you know, if I'm picking it up correctly, a great many of these crimes are being perpetrated by a smallish number of perpetrators. And obviously, you know, you can't be going into details, but I'm sort of reassured that you're on the case, as it were. Thank you.
Councillor Creighton, you've got a question, Michael?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, convener. The reduction of speeding offences in Dundee on page 35 is very welcome and I commend the police for the proactive approach to this. I note that the safety camera unit has been utilised for flexible deployment sites. I was wondering if local councillors could nominate local sites in addition to this, so it could be a resource. And for example, can nominations go to our local inspectors or to the road safety unit?
Councillor, thanks very much for the question. So I think in terms of the feed-in for where those deployment sites are, there's clearly a gathering of information from a number of different factors and places relative to accident and injury statistics, relevant to speed monitoring equipment. But also, we clearly take into consideration information that's passed us via the public, community concerns and otherwise, and by extension, that would clearly come through our elected members. So I would certainly welcome any opportunities you have or thoughts to pass that into your local community teams. It does need considered in the broader picture of clearly the strategic drive to reduce road casualties and reduce injuries. So the primary focus of any of our deployments flexibly will always be prioritised against those roads that create the greatest danger to people on that public safety front. But we clearly want to also consider local concerns as well. And then there's a number of additional means of visibility and deployment that we can put into place if we can't deploy a flexible camera into site. And they might include a range of matters from our community teams with handheld devices and a range of other opportunities. So would welcome certainly any information you want to pass in to your local community teams. And Ross, I think you were going to come in.
Yes, thanks, sir. Just to pick up on that point, after the Q4 meeting, I did circulate, forgive me, I can't remember which councillor it was, but there is a pro forma template that the Safety Camera Partnership use that they absolutely encourage anyone to complete if they have a concern for that local area. So I probably should have circulated that more broadly after the Q4 meeting, but I'll certainly do that after this meeting so that there's a document there that you can use. It's got email addresses in terms of where it needs to be submitted to, to allow you to have that direct link with the partnership and start to influence where you want to see those cameras. But as I say, there are some criteria in terms of the technical kind of places where they can put them. So, you know, it starts the process and it allows that evaluation to take place and I'll certainly share that with you.
I think it was Bailey Dawson asked for that. The next on the list is councillor Coleman. Daniel?
Thank you, convener. Page 41, the domestic abuse is a, I'm sure, a real concern for all elected members and police officers and the wider community alike, but I have, there is a significant drop of the detection rate compared to 21, 22. Can I ask if there's an obvious reason for the drop of the detection? I appreciate it said, you know, we're broadly in line with the rest of the division, but we have went from the highest to the lowest detection rate in Dundee, of Dundee, Perth, Kilmarnock and Angus in the one year. So I was just wondering if there's any particular reason that has happened. We have also fallen by 25 percentage points, so I was wondering whether maybe...
Thanks councillor for the question. Again, I'll pass to Ross in just a second for that local context. What we do find with domestic crime, probably on that broader basis, which I'll come in with first, is that there can be a mixture in terms of the date of offence. So inevitably, as we look to investigate and receive reports of domestic offending, sometimes those offences can be historic in nature, which present a range of challenges just in terms of a speedy bring to detection because it involves, you know, lengthy work through of often backdated information and challenges that exist in that space. So much like some of our other crimes, there are and there will be a number that remain under positive investigation. And I would certainly hope that we, like we've had described there with the violence figures and the acquisitive crime rates that we've seen already, an uplift and a pickup in terms of detection into quarter two, that we would see similar in terms of the domestic offending. One of the points Ross kind of made earlier on around about the violence spaces is recognising the figures that are there for domestics will relate to assault data as well as other domestic offending. So it already indicated earlier on that we have picked up quite considerably in our assault space in terms of some of those detections. So it's just to pass that reassurance on. But for Ross, for again, any additional local context?
Thank you, sir. Now, I would just pick up on that point. So the specific crime that's referenced in those statistics is the domestic abuse Scotland Act offences. So those are offences that are course of conduct offences and they can be committed over several months against the same victim and they're caught within that kind of legislation, which is that kind of coercive control and a course of conduct behaviour. So the offences themselves can be wide-ranging, require really extensive investigation, which may date back kind of several months, if not years in some cases, which means they do take a length of time for those detection rates to come through. It is just to give you that kind of broader reassurance, I see the statistic there on page 31. As we speak today, that detection rate has recovered to 72%. And as we push in towards kind of Q3, I would hope to see that building back towards where it was last year. It is that kind of lagging effect because of the complexity of some of those investigations. But hopefully that gives a sense that the detection rate is an improving picture and we would hope to push on with that as we move through the year.
Thank you.
Next, we have councillor McGirtan. George?
Thanks, Chair. Couple of questions, if I can. First question is on page 31, vehicle crime. Ross, you were breaking up. I heard the word target, but you were breaking up, so you might have answered this question. But when I look at the crime type... But when I look at the crime type, and you mentioned in the report, in the scrutiny report, there's serial offenders, repeat offenders. Are Police Scotland adopting target profiles, problem profiles for neighbourhood areas and have the sufficient resources to put into these operations to combat these criminals being active and committing these vehicle crimes?
Councillor McGurpin, I'll maybe pick up on that first. So certainly, I chair a regular divisional tasking meeting, which covers clearly, you know, crime trends across the whole of the Tayside area. And as a part of that, we would look at acusative crime series, violent crime series, other serieses and challenges that we're currently facing. So certainly at that board that I chair, Ross will come to me along with other aspects in terms of our criminal investigation branch. We will always look at where we've got rises in crime and seek analytical support to develop problem profiles so that we've got the best information possible to be able to target our resources in the right spaces. So I can certainly give assurances from my perspective as the commander, that I recognise absolutely the quite stark figures in terms of motor vehicle crime, acusative crime, and particularly the challenges in Dundee. So we are applying that focus and all additional and available resource that we can to try and help get on top of this. And as I say, there is a number of target offenders, if you like, that we recognise are causing a fair bit of that challenge for us. So I trust that probably answers, hopefully answers the question, but I'll pass on to Ross if there was anything additional you'd want to add into that, Ross.
No, thank you, sir. As I suppose the other bits I would just add around your question around resourcing. So our patrol matrix is absolutely driven by the analysis of the crimes and when they occur, where they occur and who they're committed by. And that drives where we decided to deploy our resources. Now, on that resourcing front, given the nature of these crimes are linked to vehicles, we've got full support from a number of national divisions in terms of our road policing unit and also operational support units who are national divisions but have a footprint within the Tayside and Dundee area. They are fully cited on the analysis that we've done and the problems that we have and are entirely supportive of our own local resources in terms of, you know, the high visibility patrols, the patrols in the right areas at the right time in order to disrupt as much activity as possible and make positive kind of enforcement steps when we can. You know, linked to that is the fact that our problem profile is also shared with partners across the kind of criminal justice service and sphere around COPFS, for example, as well. So the cases that we do report are marked for their attention to make sure that they're given, you know, the priority that they deserve to try and move them through the system as quickly as possible to support us with those kind of bail conditions, curfew conditions, et cetera, that are trying to disrupt that activity. Hopefully those answers together are of assistance, councillor.
I look forward to quarter two's figures being considerably lower than quarter one's figures, but we'll see, we'll see when that comes. My other question, Chair, is regards to the figures that are presented in the scrutiny report. And I touched on this to a degree last, last time Police Scotland were at committee. Now, from the three graphs, for any crime type, I've got vehicle crime open, so I'm looking at that. You've got Scottish detection rates. However, we don't have Scottish figures for recorded crime or how it affects, the crime type affects rates per 10,000 of the population. And I think it goes back to councillor Duncan's question, and there was mention made of the national trend. Now, what we're getting is a brief about the national trend, vehicle crime going up, but it's a verbal. I think when I look at analysis and I look at meaningful figures, I think we should include moving forward in scrutiny reports, I think it would be helpful for all elected members if they seen comparators, either a Scottish comparator in recorded crime along with the rate per 10,000 population, or indeed a comparator with other major cities. Because I feel every quarter I look at these figures and nine times out of 10, I always feel we're comparing apples with pears when we look at Perth and Conross and Angus. And I think there would be something more meaningful that we will get out as elected members if we were comparing with the likes of other cities, for instance, Stirling, Edinburgh, Aberdeen, Glasgow, such like. So I'll leave it with you. I would be interested in what your views are on that. I'll leave that with you.
Councillor McGurpin, thanks very much for the, for the observation there. And that's something I'll take away off table and clearly have some conversation into. The, the figures across the country and across all of the cities are produced and published as part of Police Scotland's National Quarterly Performance Updates and Figures and the extent of information that is then available in that. I mean, you know, I guess there's a balance to be struck just in terms of the volume and size of reporting, given the amount of information and data that is clearly there across the size and scale of Scotland. But your point certainly, you know, is taken on board and is noted. I'll go away and have some reflection on that with Ross and with colleagues in Police Scotland and we'll give some thought to it and probably come back to you maybe off table. It may be that for certain crime types, there would be a benefit in trying to strike that balance where we can have a look at that additional data, almost like a spotlight and focus, if that helps. But in terms of applying that across the whole scale of the document, it would make the size and detail within it, I think, quite substantial, I guess, is probably my initial observation, but I would, I would like to go and reflect on that, I guess, is my key point.
Thanks for that.
Next question is from councillor McHugh, Dorothy.
Thank you, convener. First of all, can I say what a good report this is in terms of the way it's clearly laid out, it's very easy to read and I commend you for that. Can I take us back to page 11 to the summary and just.
Dorothy, you've put yourself on mute.
Sorry, have you missed it all?
We got, we got to your, you were on page 11, summary, I think is where you dropped off.
Okay, okay. And I note that all detection rates have either reduced or stayed the same, except for road crime and drug supply. Is there any significance in this?
So the main significance between the different crime types will often be the complexity. So where you have drugs possession or road traffic offences, they tend to be offences that are detectable in the present time in a vast majority of the instances, whereas the detection rates for a lot of the other crime types often have complexities attached to them and whether that be the further investigation required for corroborative evidence, forensic opportunities that require to be undertaken, or due to the complexities of the time an offence was reported over. I hope that helps give just a very brief explanation of the difference often between different types.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Flynn, Mark, you've got a question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just a quick question, if it's okay, regarding the antisocial behaviour data on page 22. I'm a coal side ward councillor, as you know, and you've noted that the large decrease by 188 reports. I'm a bit interested in all the stats with the antisocial behaviour, we'll have a report following this from the team. But can maybe, has there been any initiatives or strategies put in place over the last period to see, explain these numbers being so drastically different from what we would normally expect?
Councillor, thanks for the question. I'm going to pass that one straight on to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, because I know he's been heavily focused clearly on the antisocial behaviour side of things across Dundee.
Councillor, no, thanks for that. So there's probably, probably two aspects to touch on with that. And I think, without wishing to refer to COVID too often as we move away from it, that the antisocial behaviour crime classifications around the COVID offences, that they were captured because of the way they were categorised. The COVID kind of enforcement crimes throughout the pandemic were captured in that kind of antisocial behaviour, public nuisance category, which meant for two years we had a range of new offences that were being captured in there at relatively high levels, particularly at the start of lockdown. We've obviously seen the enforcement around those offences completely stopped now, which takes a huge chunk of that number away. So what we're starting to see is effectively a rebalancing of some of those statistics back to where they were pre-COVID. However, on a more positive note, there's certainly huge amounts of work on the go between our kind of city policing teams, antisocial behaviour teams and pushing into kind of third sector partners to really target our kind of antisocial behaviour laws, particularly against drug addiction, which again, see some weaknesses in those kind of reporting. And so I think in combination with those factors responsible for the numbers, but certainly the removal of COVID occurrence rates plays a significant, again, part in that.
Can I just come back, Christine, is it okay?
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, thanks very much for that, Ross. I really appreciate the information because I think it's really important we actually see why the numbers decreased so much and you've actually kind of clearly explained, although I was breaking up quite a lot, I kind of got the gist of what you were trying to say there. Can I just ask one more thing with regards to page 34, Operation Close Pass? You mentioned, and I was one of the councillors who was very keen to see this put in place. You touch upon Operation Close Pass, but I don't see any information on that. For example, how many operations has actually been, how many people were actually spoken to or attended to or maybe had a warrant put against them, whatever the case may be. I just wonder, can you maybe pass that information on at some time in the elected members in the near future?
Certainly, councillor. So I think we offered the last quarter to have Inspector Greg Burns of our road policing unit attend a scrutiny meeting. So the option we looked for was to bring him in to report on Q2, which hopefully covers those kind of summer months and would then kind of capture a lot of some of that activity that you've got an interest in. So I think that's one we can capture in the next scrutiny committee meeting. So you can maybe speak directly or scrutinise directly our road policing colleague who's responsible for, for Operation Close Pass and its deployment within the city. And maybe just quickly to jump back to the antisocial behaviour starts, just picking up on your point, that there may be a wee bit of work there I can do to try and, you know, compare current statistics to pre-pandemic, which might be of use to you just to try and provide a better comparison. So I'll take some of that away and see if I can find a wee bit of work I can do to try and just assist to you to understand what those drops look like and why they have been.
Well, thanks very much on both points and I look forward to the scrutiny committee next time. Thank you.
Next, it's councillor Lynne, Ken, you've got a question?
Thank you, convener. Yeah, I've got a question and it's quite a specific question, but probably with wider implications for the whole city. I've had complaints probably stretching back a year from residents of Clive Street, which is just off Clappington Road. Now, Clive Street is a no entry from Clappington Road, but the allegations are that residents' safety is in danger and someone claiming they've almost been struck twice by cars coming in from Clappington Road, which they obviously weren't expecting due to the no entry sign. Now, obviously I've spoken to the local police and I think what I was told was, what I was asking actually was about cameras. Could cameras be installed there on a temporary basis? But I think I was told, well, that's not something we do. But I was told that the, that area, particular street, would be added to the patrol matrix. And I'm not sure how helpful that is because I don't think someone, if they see a police vehicle in the vicinity is going to be making an illegal turn anyway. I think the only way to evidence that, and it's really quite frustrating for me, is to install a camera on a temporary basis. So, you know, as I say, I was told that's not something you do, but if that's the case, is it something you would consider for the likes of Clive Street and other areas which have this problem? Thank you.
As it's quite a specific local issue, maybe something that Ross is already aware of, so I'll maybe just offer him that opportunity to comment first and if he's not already aware of it, I can come back in.
Now, councillor, I suppose by offer to you would be just to pick that up off table with you to try and kind of really dig into your concerns on behalf of your constituents and see if we can formulate a plan together to take some enforcement action around that and look into it for you. So I'll perhaps email you after the meeting to set up a kind of individual meeting on that, if that would be of assistance to you.
Yeah, that would be good. As I say, I have spoken to the local police though, who said that's something that you don't do. Is that, is that like, is the case and if so, is that liable to be reviewed? Because it's not just Clive Street, I'm sure there's an issue in other areas.
I mean, in terms of enforcement, I guess my point would be in terms of enforcement cameras at static points for specific issues, then that's probably something that we would need to discuss in conjunction with the local authority, because it's not equipment that Police Scotland holds per se. But aside from kind of permanent cameras, I'd be confident that there is work that we can do there to certainly improve that and make it better. And I look forward to picking that up with you, councillor.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
And the next question is from councillor Short, Lynne.
Thank you. It was really more of a comment as we come to the end of this committee. Obviously, there was quite a major event happened and Gold Command was stood up and I just wanted to pay tribute to the officers across the region, predominantly right across the region, who were incredible in making sure that everything went off nice and smoothly. So I just wanted to put it on record and thank you this evening for contributing, obviously, to the wider command and, as I said, making it all go nice and smoothly is very much appreciated.
Councillor Short, thanks very much for the comments on that. I think we will likely have some narrative regarding the stand up of what was a major operation for us in the quarter two report. But I would echo, you know, well, one, grateful for the comments, but two, would actually echo many thanks from policing across our multi-agency partners, across volunteers, volunteer marshals, volunteer stewards from the public and to our communities for really reflecting well across the whole of Tayside in terms of that collective response to that major operation. Really grateful for the support across the whole board.
And the next name on the list is councillor Finnigan, Jack, you've got a question?
Yeah, sorry, I apologise for any background noise, but it comes in, so it's a bit noisy here. It was just, I think it's page 21 of the report, the second paragraph, it says, "In the North East, Long Haw Community Team had a focus on antisocial behaviour in the Mount Macragi area." I'm just wondering if these figures have been added to the East End, which has the East End Ward, or if they've been filtered into the North East Ward, if it's simply a typing error.
Thanks, Karen, so I'll just try and bring that page up my site and I don't know, I see Ross has taken himself off mute, he might be there before me.
Councillor, I'd just offer my apology, that's a typing error on my behalf and nothing more. So I do apologise, my mistake.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm not seeing any other questions on the list, so I'd like to thank Police Scotland for their attendance this evening and thanks for all the answers. They've been very, very good. And I think Ken will look forward to hearing from you again for his question. So we'll move on to the next part of the committee. Veronica?
Item three, antisocial behaviour report, 1st of April to 30th of June 2022. You have this report for noting.
Elaine, have you taken us through this one?
Thank you, convener. This is the standard report that you will recognise, just giving you an update on the statistics for antisocial behaviour across the city broken down into wards. You'll also notice from this report that following previous discussions, we've added in a couple of case studies, which hopefully helps you understand some of the approaches that the antisocial behaviour team take in conjunction with our partnership colleagues in trying to address some of the particular issues that we deal with. Happy to take any questions, convener. to take any questions, convener.
First on the list is Bailey McPherson. Fraser, you've got a comment and a question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. My comments really in relation to the briefing on Friday, which I felt was extremely helpful, and I'm very grateful to officers. I think everybody who attended would agree. It was well worthwhile and grateful to officers for that. Now, I did actually mention what I'd be asking for Warren, Elaine, as to what I would be asking. And it's really around the whole issue of noise nuisance. It's the highest this time in every ward. It's not always the highest in every ward, but on this occasion, it certainly is. In my own West End ward, of the 19 cases, a huge number, 15 of the 19 are noise related. And I was wondering, really, firstly, how much is, are there any statistics on how much is reported to the antisocial behaviour team as, if you like, one-off party noise, which is not an ongoing issue? And how much is, like, repeated noise issues? I get a fair old number of one-off related noise issues. Very often, West End ward has a lot of private rented properties, very often from that. Now, I'll be honest and say I take these to the private sector services team rather than the antisocial behaviour team. I think they're one-off. But if they're repeated, often getting the antisocial behaviour team involved is crucial. And my sort of second part of this is really about what more can be done in the way of education and messaging. And I'm thinking in relation to private sector, the private sector, privately rented in particular, what messaging could be given to, for example, landlords and agents, for example. Could I lastly say, the case studies is a good innovation, and I welcome that as well.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I'm happy to look at the statistics with the team to see whether or not we can get that granular analysis for you in terms of one-offs compared to repeat incidents, and see where we can, if we can get that information for you. I would certainly agree with you that there are probably a lot more that we could do in relation to publicising our response to particularly noise nuisance. And we do have good connections with landlords within the private rented sector through Colin McCrea and his team, and we do have quite an extensive database. So I think that would be a good place to start, to try and roll out some of that information. So happy to have a look at that in the round and see what we can do to be more clear, both about what action can be taken and how we can proactively deal with things as well.
Very helpful indeed, Elaine. Thank you.
And next question is from councillor Flynn. Mark?
Thank you. I agree with Bill McPherson. He's actually touched on the main crux of my question as well with regards to the noise, because in my ward, obviously, it's a lot higher and around the West End. And I think falling on from the question to the chief inspector with regards to the massive decrease, I'm talking 188 cases within Coffside, I don't really see that, Elaine, relating within the report. Yet the statistics in the report tend to be kind of similar as on the previous reports we've had. And yet we've seen a number of, as Ross Fitzgerald just said, the massive increase, well, decrease because of COVID and all the issues with that. And that doesn't relate. I'm finding this confusing with regards to the antisocial report from the police to your report here. And I'm just wondering if some of the statistics, as Bill McPherson touched upon with the noise, are maybe getting a bit confused with other issues within the actual antisocial team? And they're not really reflecting really what's happening within the wards?
Thanks very much for your question, councillor Flynn. I think there is a difference between what is reported through Police Scotland in terms of criminal antisocial behaviour. So there is a difference between what we record and what Police Scotland record. But I'm happy to bring Graham Mackenzie in, who's the manager for that team, just to explain a little bit of the background to that. So Graham's on the call.
Thank you, Elaine. Yes, councillor Flynn, I think Elaine really hit the nail on the head there. For example, neighbour disputes that can sometimes be very low level, won't ever be reported to the police and is remitted to the antisocial behaviour team to try to resolve. So I would actually go as far as saying it's nigh on impossible to make that direct comparison. There will inevitably be certain more serious cases, those involving perhaps harassment or verbal assault, or sometimes even assault, where there is a crossover that direct comparison could be found within police statistics. But in the main, it's not really comparing kind of apples with similar apples. All falls under that banner of antisocial behaviour, but sometimes a very different profile of antisocial behaviour reported to my team as distinct to Police Scotland.
Okay, I'll probably take this off table rather than just continue here, if that's okay. Okay, thank you.
And the next is councillor McGurven. George?
Thanks, Chair. Similar to councillor Flynn, I was trying to make sense of the figures for the Police Scotland scrutiny report to this one, but your explanation is fine. I think we'll look at noise nuisance as the serial disorder problem. We've seen it in every quarter for a long, long time that I've seen. And the pattern for me now is Coffside, Lochie and East End. Are we focusing so that for this, so that, okay, April, June, we've covered, we don't know what's happened in July to September, but I could probably bet my bottom dollar, if it's worth anything, that these three ward areas will be the top areas of concern for quarter two. So my question is, are we focusing our resources to combat noise nuisance in these areas?
Thank you, councillor McGurven, for your question. I think what I can see is that as well as kind of a kind of citywide tasking meeting, we do have local tasking meetings as well. So we have local multi-agency meetings that look specifically at the issues within those wards, and look at how we can target our resources to dealing with them in particular. So again, I'm happy for Mr Mackenzie to come in and just explain that process to you. But it's very much a multi-agency approach, and it is very much looking specifically at the issues, all of the information that we have in relation to those wards, and trying to target our resources to how we deal with them. But Graham, do you want to come in on that?
Yep, thanks, Elaine. Yes, councillor McGurven, in part, the service is demand-driven. So where the complaints are coming from is clearly where the resources are allocated. We're a little bit early at the moment, but we hope to be able to demonstrate, perhaps next quarter, the impact that the authority we were given to procure the noise app is having on how long these noise cases are staying open. So I appreciate that relates to those cases that are resolved. The deterrence effect perhaps has a synergy with the previous question from an elected member around how can we convey to our citizens issues surrounding noise and the unacceptability and disturbance it causes other people. So I think that, think two factors. One, we hope to demonstrate that the use of the app is enabling us to pick up complaints a lot more quickly and resolve them at a lower level, which is always our intent, and then pick up on the deterring information to assist people to live peaceably.
So I'm still unsure as to how quarter by quarter Lochie, Coffside and East End have the highest instances. So if we're having a multi-agency approach, if it's demand-driven, Graham, which you quite rightly say it will be, that's why we're seeing the figures, why are they not coming down?
I think those ward areas that you highlight, population density is always an issue where we have people living quite closely together. They tend, I think I would warrant councillor McGurven, if you looked back several years, there are always going to be those areas of the city where noise nuisance traditionally has been highest. In terms of those MATAK meetings that Mrs Willen referred to, they do pick up on kind of concentration of antisocial behaviour in any particular area. But I'm happy, perhaps offline, to share with you some of the work that we've been doing within the team to try and make inroads into that.
Okay, I look forward to that, Graham. Thank you.
And next is councillor Tolan. Siobhan, you've got a question?
Thanks, Christina. Just a question about the surveillance. That's just at the bottom of page four. Notice that it says, "From the 10 cases surveillance has been used, evidence has been found in only one case." If you, any, could you give me a picture on what the other nine cases actually were? Was it a case of just couldn't get evidence, or an oversensitivity to noise and disruption? It seems quite low in terms of, you know, if you're convinced that there's noise and disturbance, but only one out of 10, 10% is actually getting evidence?
Thanks very much for your question, councillor Tolan. I think one person's antisocial behaviour is another person's clash of lifestyles. And, you know, that can often be the case where somebody, you know, maybe it's somebody's washing machine going on in the evening when they're trying to watch TV. It is inconvenient, but it's not antisocial behaviour. Although we would, you know, if there was anything that we could do through negotiation and mediation to try and resolve it, then we certainly would. But in some cases, it's more of a clash of lifestyles than antisocial behaviour, I would say.
So can I just have a quick follow-up? And I'm sorry if I might have missed that information, but is that lower or higher than the normal in terms of the one out of 10?
I'll ask Mr Mackenzie to come in on that one.
I think in the main, that quarter report may be slightly lower than normal. However, as Mrs Willen said, very often, a low-level intervention with a neighbour to highlight that that washing machine, or very often, we find particularly during COVID periods, it would be children perhaps running across the floor, just play. And perhaps the neighbour not understanding of that disturbance to others. And so we do tend to find that on surveillance, there is a low percentage that results in more serious interaction with the team. But I would say one in 10 is probably slightly, slightly lower than normal.
Thank you. That's really useful. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any more questions. So thank you for that. And that is the last item on the agenda. So thank you for your attendance and your questions.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr Mini. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's Neighbourhood Services Committee meeting. Veronica, can you take us through the agenda?
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I can see no hands, so I'll assume that there are no declarations of interest. Next item, Veronica.
Item two, land and buildings transaction tax. This item's been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey Keenan.
So on the agenda, we have that Bailey Keenan is asking the committee to agree that the chief executive should write to the First Minister of Scotland, Nicola Sturgeon, MSP, requesting that local authorities should be exempt from land and buildings transaction tax. Can I ask if Bailey Keenan has submitted a motion?
I have submitted a motion. I'm happy for that to be circulated and prepared to speak to it if you want.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Veronica, is it Veronica who circulates that? Just give people a...
I'll do that now.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan, do you wish to wait until we've all?
Well, I'm happy. Well, it's been circulated. Just to say a few words in relation to supporting it. And you'll realise that in the last committee, convener, I asked if you would consider this, and hoped that we would resolve the matter then. But, you know, as that didn't happen, obviously, I've brought the item back as a standalone item. You know, Labour some time ago put forward a policy to spend £6 million purchasing council housing. Before you were a councillor on Dundee City Council, it's probably going back a few years. So disappointing that that money has yet hasn't been spent, and we haven't actually purchased any houses out of that £6 million. But you did bring forward a paper that suggested we'd be acquiring further houses. And that there was a considerable amount of money into its millions, although we didn't set any target or value on the houses that we'd likely to purchase. But in looking at the city, then the average house price is about £183,000. And some of the new build homes vary sort of from about the £280,000 to £300,000 that are available on just a quick look at some of the websites that I've seen today. And we would pay land and building transaction tax on that. You know, the absolute minimum level of land and building tax, transaction tax is 2%. And then there is the additional dwelling aspect to that that adds a further 4%. So regardless of the price that council pay to purchase a house, then they will pay 4%. That would appear if we continue to spend that, then obviously it will be money detracted from frontline services. And I would like to see the maximum amount of money spent on frontline services, given that we have £7,000 on a waiting list in Dundee looking for a home, and that we, that I personally, and I believe in my other colleagues, see an endless number of housing applications where, you know, we're not even able to give tea and sympathy. There's people on a waiting list that are going to be there a long time. And I know things like the Derby Street, housing development has taken six years to come to fruition. And that's not necessarily the blame of council. There's been a number of circumstances that have led that. But it's certainly slowed up movement in the housing market in Dundee, and I don't want to slow it up any further. And I would like to buy the maximum amount of houses. So it doesn't appear that it would be a difficult request to ask the government not to take that land and building transaction tax for local government. It's something that you'll realise that when Police Scotland and Fire and Rescue Scotland were set up, the Treasury in the UK set them up to pay VAT. Although the Scottish government did get advice, if they set it up differently, they wouldn't have paid that. But they continued the fight. And I believe that the UK government gave them that money back. So I'm looking for us to write to the First Minister, and obviously the Secretary for Finance, and see if they will make local government exempt, given that, you know, that we have a housing crisis and really need to do the best we can, spend all our money on the frontline services and make a difference. And just to let you know, we have spent about £67,000 in land and building transaction tax. Perhaps the government could think about even giving with that back, given that they got VAT back from the UK government. But I think the main thing is asking them about the tax they start with and see if they would agree. So I'll look for your support on that. So I think we need the cross-party support to make a harm.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Do you have a second for the motion? I should have asked you that at the beginning, but...
Yes, I do.
Who is the second? Ah, Dorothy, councillor McHugh. Councillor McHugh, do you wish to speak in support of the motion? You have up to four minutes. Yeah.
Thank you. I'll certainly not take four minutes. I'm delighted to second Bailey Keenan's motion on land and buildings transaction tax.
Oops, sorry, councillor McHugh, you've gone on to mute again. Sorry.
Sorry, that's the second time I've done that tonight.
You got to, you are delighted. So if you go back to the beginning.
To second Bailey Keenan's motion on land and buildings tax. If we look back to the last council meeting on the 22nd of August, when we approved the open market housing acquisition strategy, I can't recall any mention of additional dwelling supplements in that report, but perhaps I missed it. As things stand, purchase on the open market will trigger an additional dwelling supplement of 4%, and that's £40,000 for each £1 million spent, an additional cost that could seriously reduce the funds accoun- that could seriously reduce the funds the council has available for these purchases. The social rented sector in Dundee is in crisis for many reasons, as will likely be highlighted during further discussion tonight. Bailey Keenan's motion makes good sense, considering our recent approval of the open market strategy. We should embrace every opportunity to maximise funding for the much needed social housing in our city and I urge all councillors to support this motion.
Thank you councillor McHugh, I see that we have an amendment from councillor Alexander, would you like to raise your amendment councillor Alexander and ensure that it's circulated?
Thanks convenor, yeah, happy for that to be circulated, I was holding off to see if I might not need to move it, so I suppose just to be clear, no adverse to the suggestion being put forward whatsoever. I think my concern is that it is so limited in its focus and if that's the extent of the ambition of this council, then I think we're doing a disservice to our constituents and to the citizens of Dundee. I think LBTT should be part of a much wider ask, much more comprehensive and robust suite of options that the council could consider to deploy resources in a way that meet the needs of the people that we all represent and that we are continued to represent for the next few years as well. So what my motion seeks to do is actually build a more robust narrative and a more robust set of asks, I suppose, and also set out how they can deliver some real change. And I think Bailey Keenan was right when he referenced the 67,000 pound figure, what he didn't reference was that was over a three year period, that at current prices, three according to mine, that at current prices is probably about half a house. So the reality is that I think we need to be much more bold, much more ambitious when we set out that we want to see the removal of some taxation or the devolution of those powers to local government. Now, I've been part of a body of work with the other seven cities of Scotland through the Scottish Cities Alliance, but there's also been a strategic conversation through COSLA as well. As the motion says, I'm happy for officers to share some of that information on the wider set of asks, which cover a number of different aspects and I have included a specific reference to including LBTT within that. But as I say, I think, I think if we only focus on something that has generated, you know, 67 grand over the last couple of years or few years, then actually we're not really being ambitious enough. So my motion hopefully will find support cross party because it incorporates exactly what Kevin's asking, but goes beyond that by seeking, as I say, a much more comprehensive ask of national government and builds on the work that has already been undertaken by the cities of Scotland and by other local authorities as well. So in that way, I hope that we can find consensus on the motion that's been put forward under my name. Thanks convenor.
Thank you councillor Alexander, I could see that Bailey Sawyers is seconding your amendment, I'm just going to ask if Bailey Sawyers would like to say anything in support?
Yeah, very briefly convenor, I think John's covered much of what I would have said. I think, you know, I don't disagree with the direction of travel that the Labour motion is bringing forward, but I think it's just, it's so limited and focusing on two very, very, I suppose, it's a very narrow focus on two fiscal levers, which as has been stated over the past two or three years, costs the council 67,000 pound and I think John's being ambitious if he thinks we could buy half a house for that. You know, the reality is Scottish government and local government are involved in a widespread local governance review that's looking at a whole range of topics, there's more than 40 public sector organisations have an involvement in that review and I think for us just to be picking at two relatively small levers is really lacking a wee bit of ambition, you know, we've got a wide range in review, let's go on with that, let's feed into that and let's make sure we come up with something that's a bit more ambitious and has a greater benefit for local government and particularly for Dundee.
Thank you Bailey Sawyers, Bailey Keenan, I could see that you wish to come back, so given the amendment-
Convenor, I realise that obviously the administration has the votes and can carry it through, so I'm not going to proceed to divide on it. What I can obviously do if we're unsuccessful in bringing this, any solution to the land and buildings transaction tax is to bring it back. There was only 60 odd thousand spent over two year, but we haven't spent the six million pound that Labour made available to buy houses two year ago, which is a real disappointment or we would have spent a lot more. But, you know, I'll no divide on it, I will use other avenues through COSLA and COSLA leadership, through the Labour group there to obviously try to advance things as well. So if that adds about extra clout for Dundee, then we'll attempt to do that, but certainly won't divide on it at this moment and I think we've achieved a consensus that paying the tax isn't such a good thing. So we'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so are we, I could see Bailey McPherson there, I'll let him come in now.
Thanks convenor, I'm pleased that we're not dividing on this because I think we generally agree with the direction of travel, shall we say, on this. We were minded to recognise the merit, shall we say, in engagement across other local authorities and looking at all possible levers. So in that respect, there is a lot of merit in that, although I do understand exactly where Bailey Keenan is coming from, albeit as we've alluded to, the amount that would have been achieved is relatively limited in relation to the scale of the task, but the point, the point, the point at the end of the day is we really need to, given the housing crisis in Dundee and indeed right across Scotland, engaging with partners and other local authorities, looking at all potential levers, it makes a whole lot of sense. The one thing I would say though, and it's the point Kevin made a moment ago regarding bringing things back and so on, I do think we really do need a point at which we come to a conclusion, shall we say, on what the ask is of government, of central government. And to that end, it would be useful if there is some report back, obviously I'm very conscious of the fact that Christopher Alexander's on the Scottish Cities Alliance and indeed chairs it and it would be useful if there is some, you know, feedback to this committee so that this just doesn't get lost in a, you know, in a vague agreement that we're going to engage with others and the ask in relation to LBTT and indeed other possible levers is never made. So I think if we get that assurance, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm grateful, I have to say, to Bailey Keenan for bringing the matter forward in the first place.
Bailey McPherson, we could see in the amendment as proposed that we are asking for agreement that officers provide a summary of the work identified across these strategic areas, so I think there is a very clear intention to come back on those issues.
Can I just make clear what's in that motion amendment is not quite what I was asking for? Yeah, officers will provide, as John alluded to, you know, the work that's been done to date, but I do think we need to come to a point at which we've got a conclusion so that we can decide whether in fact we alone decide to contact Scottish government with that ask, or more helpfully, it would be, hopefully there's some progress with partners across Scotland and we can come to a conclusion where the whole of Scottish local government, COSLA presumably being the vehicle for doing so, makes that ask of government, both in relation to LBTT, but also in relation to potential other financial levers as well.
Councillor Alexander is happy to respond, so I'll bring him in now.
Thanks for indulging me convenor and through you, yeah, absolutely. I think what might be helpful at the appropriate time is perhaps an all elected member briefing because I understand that there will be a myriad of questions, but also some context that's important that we sometimes lose in a committee meeting, so perhaps that's the best route forward where we can provide some information in black and white and also have a wider discussion as all 29 elected members, so that's maybe a good way forward, thanks.
Okay, so I take it that the amendment is now the motion and I see no dissent to the motion, so that's agreed. Thank you. Veronica, can we move on to the next item please?
Item three on the agenda, regulation of social housing in Scotland, annual assurance statement, this is for your approval.
Thank you, this annual report is a regulatory requirement under the Scottish Housing Regulators framework for the regulation of Scottish housing in Scotland, of social housing in Scotland. The framework sets out how registered social landlords and local authority housing and homeless services are regulated. The report is asking us to note the requirement of the regulatory framework and the opportunities for tenants and elected members to scrutinise our performance. Those opportunities are detailed on pages two, three and four of the report. The report, the annual assurance statement is included and on page seven of the report as appendix one and we are seeking your approval for this statement and its submission. There's one point I would like to raise here that has been raised with me by councillor McHugh, she very thankfully raised that on page two, paragraph 4.3, we refer to events in Ukraine and I, as the convenor, am asking with thanks to councillor McHugh for her suggestion that this be amended to state very clearly that these people have been displaced by a war in Ukraine, not simply events, because that would be a more accurate description. I'm just going to ask officers to amend that sentence. Can I ask Louise if she wishes to highlight any of the key points in the report before opening to questions?
Thank you convenor, the report as set out looks at how we scrutinise our engagement across the housing service and I think it sets out the examples in which we do that, both with elected members and with the Federation of Tenants Association and with our tenants overall. It recognises the council's performance framework in which we report progress on our strategic plans and our strategies and it incorporates a comprehensive range of actions and performance indicators in respect of the housing service. What the report does set out is it's an opportunity to highlight any areas of improvement or where there is a material breach and what we recognise within this report is the impact of Covid and particularly around electrical inspections that were carried out over the course of last year and the programme in which that is currently in place to make sure that those are concluded within this current year. What I also recognise is the unsuitable accommodation order which was brought in towards the end of the pandemic and what we recognise is a handful of breaches to that order. What I would add in terms of those breaches is that there were seven and those were at the point in which the order was brought in and for a matter of days. I'm happy to take any questions, Elaine and I on this report.
Thank you Louise, councillor McHugh.
Thank you convenor and for raising that issue that I discussed with you earlier. I'm grateful to officers for clarification that I received on Friday on a number of areas in this report and a first reading of the assurance statement would suggest that all is well and where it's not, recovery plans are in place to address specific issues and that's as it should be. The devil is also, as always, is in the detail, there are two howvers in this statement. The council breached the homeless person's unsuitable accommodation order during 21/22 and officers have clarified that that happened in seven instances over the period. The council also breached the rules around electrical testing for 2,763 homes, that is around 22% of households who remained at risk. So all is not as well as it might seem. I ask therefore that in support of the convenor's assurance, the specific recovery plans for these two areas where the council has defaulted on its legal obligations are brought before council at the earliest opportunity.
Thank you councillor McHugh, Louise, would you like to come back on those assurances?
Of course, thank you convenor and thank you councillor McHugh. The usual forum for this would be through the housing best value group, so with your approval convenor, what I would look to do is report back through the housing best value group on progress in respect of the electrical inspections and also in respect of the unsuitable accommodation order.
Councillor McHugh, I hope that you accept that that's satisfactory, you're on the best value committee, so thank you, thank you very much for that. So can I take it that that report, the assurance statement is approved and ready for submission? Sorry Elaine, would you like to come in?
Thank you convenor, I just wanted to reassure councillor McHugh that these are a unique set of circumstances and we've always prided ourselves in the city, particularly in relation to the unsuitable accommodation order, that we've managed to maintain a good performance in that area and it's something that we work really, really hard to restore as quickly as possible.
Thank you Elaine for that, so we take it that that assurance statement will be submitted. Veronica, can we move to the next item please?
Item number four Dundee strategic housing investment plan, this report is for your approval.
So the ship is our key statement of affordable housing development opportunities, this version of the ship covers the five year period from 2023 through to 2028 and it details the proposals the councils and our partners have for affordable housing delivery based on the demand of the local housing strategy and the local development plan. The report recognises the 89 million Scottish government allocation for affordable housing and neighbourhood services are the strategic lead for the programme. We work with the Scottish government, registered social landlords and the private housing sector to explore all possible housing options. We're looking to support the delivery of the city centre strategic plan for investment in social housing within the city centre. It is acknowledged within the report that there has been a significant impact on progress because of the pandemic and has had on the construction across the city and ongoing supply chain and price inflation costs are also being recognised. I would now like to turn to Elaine to take us through some of the key points of the report and I'll then open it up for questions.
Thank you convenor, just in summary, this is setting out our objectives and plans for the years ahead, it's done very much in partnership with colleagues both within the city council and as you say, the Scottish government and most importantly, our housing association partners. There's been a lot of background work done to identify key strategic sites right across the city and to work closely with our partners in relation to how we might develop those sites going forward. As you've mentioned, it has been quite a challenging couple of years with the pandemic and we've been working very hard with our partners to get a existing programme back up and running and I'm pleased to see some of those sites are now starting to build out and be available quite soon for letting, so I'm really pleased that with our partners we're starting to get back on track and this certainly sets out our ambitions going forward into the future.
Thank you Elaine, I could see questions, I think the first one's from councillor Crichton.
Thank you convenor, with regards to table one on page 10 and the other project in table two on page 27, how confident are officers that the completion dates will actually be met? The Derby Street development is hugely over target in terms of completion. I do appreciate, as we mentioned, the pandemic is part of the explanation, but only part of it, so can assurances be given that we're confident on the other completion dates and that these can actually be achieved?
Thank you, we do ask these questions every week, is it best for you to come in here Elaine or for Louise?
Thank you convenor, I'll start and then I can bring in Louise, but just to confirm that we work very closely with the housing association sector to ensure that what we're reporting is achievable, we've all been affected by the pandemic, Derby Street has also a unique set of circumstances in relation to that particular site, but we are confident working with our RSL partners that we'll be able to deliver this. Having said that, we are also in the midst of a situation where some of our cost inflation are coming through, so that does have an impact as well, but it's something that we're monitoring very, very closely. Louise, is there anything that you would like to add?
Thanks Elaine, I think you've pretty much covered it, but I think what I would direct councillor Crichton to is page 17, where we do reference the rest to the- direct councillor Crichton to is page 17, where we do reference the rest to the programme. But again, as Elaine has set out, the strategic housing investment partners do meet regularly just to monitor all individual programmes and progress for each of those, to highlight if there are any significant issues that would affect those delivery dates. And we will tie in closely with Scottish Government in terms of the completions as we see them coming through as well.
So, the numbers we have here on page 10 and 27 are the best possible estimates we can give at this point, councillor Crichton. I've got Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks, convener. My question's really, it's not unrelated to what councillor Crichton was alluding to there, in the sense that it's about deliverability, and it's actually something Elaine mentioned in our previous reply about cost inflation. So, we have in table one, the Scottish Government resource planning assumptions, and obviously, the plan locally in Dundee is based on, you know, these assumptions. And I suppose my question really is, in regard to the programmes that are listed on, as you correctly say, pages 10 and 27, are we confident that we can actually complete all these within the funding envelope? Because I think we're all very conscious of the real challenges for capital programmes in the current climate, and whether, you know, and it would just be really good to get some assurance that officers are confident that within the funding envelope, we can actually deliver all these in the period up to 2027.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. Yes, I'm sort of reflecting on the fact that we had quite dramatic developments today with Stirling, you know, so this is the world we are now living in. But if I could bring back Elaine?
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey MacPherson. You know, we are living in an imperfect world at the moment. You know, we have done everything we possibly can with our partners to try and future-proof this programme, but as much as we possibly can. But there are things out with our control that could affect this, and I think it would be fair for me to say that to you. But equally, we have tried to cast a very accurate picture into this programme, and we have very experienced partners, particularly within the housing association sector and through Scottish Government, who have tried to forecast as best we possibly can.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. I would say that I think we've always lived in an imperfect world, but this is particularly volatile at the moment. I'm sure we would all agree. And, you know, obviously, I'm very conscious of the fact officers do make strenuous efforts to keep us updated with regard to progress. And, you know, I understand there can be no utter guarantees to what capital costs are going to be in 2026, 27. I understand that. But it's useful to get the assurance that officers are doing all they can to estimate to the best of, you know, all the facts that are available. So, grateful for that response, convener. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. I've got councillor McHugh.
Thank you. It's another councillor looking for reassurance. This plan is described as ambitious and aspires to secure 1,200 new homes over the next five years. And that's a similar target to what was contained in the last ship, covering the last five years. That plan, though, according to the report submitted to the Building Stronger Communities Group in May of this year, resulted in only 446 completions over the period. And that covered the period before as well as during Covid. So, Covid merely exacerbated what appeared to be an already failing plan. We've already mentioned, it's already been said tonight that there remain around 7,000 people on the council's housing waiting list. We're not making inroads here. The total hasn't changed for many years. We need to recognise that Dundee has a housing crisis, a social housing crisis. My case work folder is full of people desperate for mainstream housing, stories of overcrowding, instances of damp and mould, intolerable antisocial behaviour, and one family of three who have languished in temporary accommodation for over 18 months. And yet, in 2021, the council's return to the Scottish Housing Regulator showed that Dundee City Council had 18 less homes for social rent in Dundee than it had in 2017. And the Housing Best Value Review Group was advised recently that there were almost 400 live voids in August 2022. So, very similar to councillor Crichton's and councillor MacPherson's pleas, what reassurance can be given that this latest investment plan will be any more successful than the previous one at improving a deteriorating housing supply and addressing what is clearly a housing crisis in our city?
I think it would be fair to say, councillor McHugh, that's exactly what we're trying to do, to build more houses. And I'm glad to report, I'm now getting weekly updates on voids, and we are going in the right direction. So, it's 300 and odd as of last week. It's still not good enough, but we're pushing as hard as we can to get through that work.
I think it's 384.
No, it's less than that on my numbers, Dorothy, but maybe got them a couple of days later. Can I bring in Elaine to respond to your specific concerns, which we all share?
Thank you, convener. Absolutely. The work that we do with our housing association and partners does monitor this extremely closely. And you'll see that the Strategic Housing Investment Plan does depend very heavily on our partner housing associations who are very experienced in delivering affordable housing. I suppose part of the issues for us is in relation to some of the sites that we're developing. They're not always, they're not, they tend to be brownfield sites rather than greenfield sites, which bring with them quite significant challenges in terms of redevelopment. There are issues around, you know, utilities. So, these are all challenges that the housing associations and ourselves face in developing this programme. And some of these things are not, we are not aware of until we start developing those sites, because these can have an impact on the development programme as well. So, it is not an easy programme to manage. There are very, very many moving parts. But I can assure you that we have a good track record in this city in terms of delivering regeneration. And I think it's quite clear, if you look across the city, just how it has transformed in the work that we've been doing with our partners over the last 10 years. I think we've got a lot to be proud of, and we are confident and determined to deliver this programme in line with that, with our partners going forward. Louise, I don't know if there's anything you want specifically to add to that?
Thank you, Elaine, and thank you councillor McHugh. I'm conscious that we did speak on Friday, and you highlight the difference in the numbers on the Scotch Housing Regulator's submission. As we discussed on Friday, what would flag is there was a lasting block policy up to the previous term that is no longer live. And what that meant was that 126 properties over the term of that policy were sold. I think what this report sets out is our ambition to increase the supply, not only with new build but open market. And I think what supports that is that we no longer have the lasting block policy, so we won't see that number decline.
Thank you, Louise. I have councillor Flynn wishing to come in with a comment.
Yeah, thank you, convener. I just follow on from what Miss Wiggland's just mentioned there with regards to redeveloping and regenerating areas. I certainly see that within my ward, not just in the, for example, the Alexander Street area, there's been a massive transformation. And along with Derby Street, yes, Derby Street's delayed, as we've been told, by a number of reasons. But I think once it's finished, it's going to be certainly welcome between in the community, and I think we're doing that across the city. I think going back to the report, convener, I certainly welcome the nay on £90 million over the next five years for the investment within the ship. And 4.4 really highlights this for me with regards to what were the benefits for the city itself with the community wealth building, the fair work practice and the real living wage that's noted within the report. But also, the final paragraph is really quite pertinent in the basis, we have a climate emergency, we've got a cost of living crisis, so we've got to make sure we actually build properties to the highest standard as possible, and making sure we actually achieve that. And I'm actually reassured by that paragraph in itself, where we're actually going to surpass and try and do as much as we can to make sure that any house is built with ourselves and our partners will be built to the highest standard available at the particular time with the technology available at the time. And I think it's really important that we talk about insulation, solar energy, wind power, and any other energy preservation, safety or saving we can do at any particular time. So, I certainly welcome the report, convener, and I look forward to seeing more houses being built in the city, redevelop the city, and always build to the highest standard to keep the costs to the residents minimal as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Bailey Sawyers.
Yes, thanks, convener. I think it's always helpful to look at things in context. And, you know, there is a degree of debate over the number of houses that are currently getting built. But if we look back, and I've been a councillor for quite a long time now, if we look back to the period between 1999 and 2007, when there was a Labour Lib Dem Scottish executive in power, there were, and I think it was either six or 12, I can't remember the exact number, council houses built in eight years in the whole of Scotland. The whole of Scotland, you know, with that tiny number of houses. And I think it's also worth reminding ourselves that if that sure government brought in the right to buy, the Labour Lib Dem Scottish Executive had every opportunity to overthrow that policy and chose not to do so. And it was only when the SNP came into power and hold it that that policy was ditched. So, that might explain why, over the years, the number of council houses has fallen considerably in the city, because at the national level, Labour and Lib Dem politicians chose to do nothing.
So, in terms of this report, this ship report for the next five years, what we are seeking for is approval for the report to allow it to be submitted to the Scottish Government so that we can get on with the work. I can't see any dissent. So, I take it that the report is approved?
Convener, I was looking to come in.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, comment in relation to councillor Sawyer's input there. I mean, if officers are going to issue the number of council houses that were built over the period of time, can they also issue the number of social landlord houses that were built over the period of time? Because there was a lot of investment went in there. And this bill of paper that's in front of it takes into account the whole of that. You know, not just what's built for council. I get it that if it's only a council tab then there wasn't, well, I accept what you're saying. But you hate to accept there was an awful lot of other houses built as well. And councillor McHugh's point would be that you're 17 less than what you were in 2017, based on figures and statistics you put yourself. But oh, an embarrassment.
Can I let Elaine come back on the request you're asking for the figures?
Convener, I'm happy to look at the affordable housing development over the period in question. Can you just clarify what period, Bailey Keenan, you're looking for that information over?
I think Bailey Sawyer's mentioned the dates. That would be useful. Somebody can look up the recording.
Okay. So, the intention is to meet these targets and build all these houses, and we have now got approval to submit the report. So, thank you for that. Can we go to the next item on the agenda?
We now go to item five, Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan, RRTP, review of year three. This is for your approval.
So, the original Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan was approved by the committee back in January 2019. And the report you have before you tonight, from pages 43 to 76, covers the action taken in year three of the plan. Year three of the plan is 2021 to 2022. The report from pages 43 to 76 has been submitted to the Scottish Government. It had to be submitted for the deadline of 30th of August, and you're being asked to note the contents. As is repeated in the report, there were six key performance areas, ending rough sleeping, preventing homelessness from occurring, improving standards and types of accommodation, reducing time spent in temporary accommodation, increasing supply of permanent accommodation, and providing appropriate support and accommodation. And throughout the report, you'll see evidence of the work that has been undertaken over year three. So, hostel accommodation has been closed, housing first has been mainstreamed, specialist support services for young people and families have been developed, and there's been a significant amount of work done in preventing homelessness and supporting tenants to maintain their tenancies. Louise, I'd like to ask if you'd like to highlight any of the key indicators here?
Thank you, convener. I think as you've set out, what we recognise within this report is the impact that Covid had on our Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan, and that is reflected within the statistics of the report. Notwithstanding the impact of Covid, though, I think when we think back to when we planned the RRTP, we didn't plan for one crisis, let alone two, when we think about Covid-19 and the cost of living crisis that we're now in. So, as the convener has set out, the focus has shifted in the last year in terms of prevention. And I hope committee can see within the report the actions that we've taken to mitigate the impact, and beyond that, to manage it as we move into the fourth year of the plan. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Louise. Dorothy, I think you have councillor McHugh, I think you got the first question.
Thank you. This report, again, I'm grateful to officers. We have had a discussion on this report last Friday, and that was very useful. This report celebrates a successful third year of a five-year plan. And it articulates four of its main aims at section 4.4. But I don't see any progress update on two of these in the report. So, my question is based around the fact that we're beyond the halfway mark for this plan. So, what progress has been made in the aim of reducing temporary accommodation places by around 150 units? And what progress has been made towards creating over 50 units of supported accommodation? I don't see any specific addressing of these issues within the report. Is there confidence that these aims can be achieved over the term, the five-year term of the plan?
Thank you, councillor McHugh. I will ask Louise to respond specifically to those two questions, and just to emphasise the point that she was alluding to. I think when we wrote the plan in January 2019, we didn't, we had no idea of what was going to be ahead of us in the coming years. And if so, we'd been doing disaster scenario planning. But if you can respond to the question about time spent in temporary accommodation and why that is proving to be so difficult at the moment?
Thank you, convener. Sorry. So, a key aspect of the plan, councillor McHugh, was or is to reduce the reliance on hostel-type accommodation and move towards a temporary accommodation model that has a greater focus on temporary furnished flats and interim temporary accommodation, where onsite support is provided and self-contained furnished accommodation. Due to the creation of new temporary accommodation capacity in response to the pandemic, half of our temporary accommodation is now temporary furnished flats. And the creation of this type of accommodation does give us greatest flexibility when adjusting our capacity within year four. What I would say is there were 448 units of temporary accommodation available at the 31st of March 2022. And this accommodation is spread throughout the city, and it comprises of flats, hostels, supported accommodation and supervised units. But that's approximately a 45% increase from the temporary accommodation stock at the baseline position. What I would note, though, in terms of progress from last year's report, is that that is reducing. When we look at year two, we had approximately 524 units at the end of year two, and we're now, as I said, at the end of March, around about 440. I think prior to the pandemic, we'd made significant steps to reducing our reliance on temporary accommodation, and we had reduced our capacity by approximately 13% from the baseline position at that time. And that was reported back to committee in previous RRTPs, where we highlighted that the direct access hostel consisting of 33 rooms was closed. And this service was one of the largest third sector hostels in Dundee. That was closed back in March 2020. And then, as you're all aware, the pandemic, the war in Ukraine, the cost of living crisis has impacted and made future predictions of temporary accommodation demand uncertain. But to give committee the assurance, we're committed to providing temporary accommodation of a high standard, an accommodation that people want to stay in, but also with a view to reducing the level of temporary accommodation that is required across the city. and accommodation that people want to stay in, but also with a view to reducing the level of temporary accommodation that is required across the city. In respect to your latter point, in terms of reducing time spent in temporary accommodation, the five-year RRTP, as it was originally set out, set our aim to reduce the average total length of stay in temporary accommodation to approximately seventy days. During twenty twenty one, the average time spent had increased and it was an increase of sixteen days from a two thousand and seventeen eighteen position. We had started though to make progress around our rapid rehousing through our increase in supply, through our partnerships across our common housing register, through increasing our allocations around homelessness. But we recognise the impact that the pandemic then had and the restrictions on people moving into permanent accommodation. So there was a bottleneck created when we think about people still presenting as homeless, but the service not being able to move on into permanent accommodation. To enable a reduction in time spent in accommodation, we rely on an increased supply of permanent accommodation options and the reduction in homeless applications. And that's why as set out in the report, this report links in with our strategic housing investment plan that's just been discussed at committee and also our focus on sustainment and prevention of homelessness as we work through year four and year five of the plan. But what is recognised, and just finally, is that the original projections over five year, we are revisiting those to see how we can achieve that by year five of the plan. But we recognise that it absolutely has had an impact and likely the cost of living crisis will also.
There was a second question about support, appropriate support in different types of accommodation. I think there was quite a bit of evidence in the report about progress there, Louise. I just wondered if you'd like to highlight.
Of course, thank you. What committee will be aware of is the Housing First Pathfinder, which was referred to within our original RRTP in Dundee, was one of the pathfinders across Scotland. What that did result in was a hundred new tenancies being created over the three years of the Pathfinder. And Housing First Support is support delivered to individuals living within their own properties. What the RRTP has set out is that we successfully managed to mainstream the Housing First Programme across Dundee in partnership with Health and Social Care and also with third sector partners. What we've also done is realigned temporary accommodation into supported accommodation. And that's both with a family focus and also for young persons across the city. So it's realigning what is temporary accommodation into the focus of supported. But it is still our intention that we're somewhere to go on this. And what we're looking at within year four of the plan is, again, another temporary accommodation, looking at a gender-specific focus and linking in through the Violence Against Women Partnership to support women who are requiring that support to get the level of support that required in supported accommodation that is gender-specific.
Your mic's off, Heather.
Sorry, I was just saying thank you, Louise, and that councillor Duncan has a question. Sorry for holding you up there.
That's okay, Convenor. To be honest, the question I was going to ask, I think has been largely covered. It was going to be around the targets on rapid rehousing. So my concern really was that, you know, although the ambition of getting it down to seventy days per case is a very audible one, I was just a bit concerned that previous, you know, reference to previous performance kind of made me question how realistic that is. So I don't know if you care to add anything to that.
I mean, we have said in the report that we are going to revisit these targets. And the part of the difficulty for us is as we begin to rehouse people who have been waiting for a long time, those average numbers are going to get worse before they get better. Because every time you close a case, you increase the average. So it's going to take a bit of time to see that average coming down, but it doesn't mean that it's getting worse, it means it's getting better. Louise, have you got anything you'd like to add there?
Thank you, Convenor. No, I think you covered that there. And I think just to reassure councillor Duncan that officers remain confident that the aims and objectives of the RRTP, those remain unchanged. But it is the timescale for delivery that has been impacted and could be further impacted. But we are closely monitoring this and focusing our interventions on prevention and sustainment to limit the numbers of homeless applications coming forward.
Okay, no, I'm obliged for that. And I think we're all aware that, you know, it's, well, interesting things we live in. And for a number of reasons, and you know, you can't put, you know, hard and fast figures on almost anything in life anymore. But I'm reassured that, you know, officers are monitoring it on a kind of proactive basis. So thank you.
Aline.
Convenor, I'd just like to add to say that our tenancy sustainment figures are some of the highest figures that we've had so far. So I think that just to reassure you, the Housing First model is clearly working well within the city and it's providing the level of support that people's tenancies are being sustained. So really pleased with the performance that that's happened because of the pilot.
Thank you for that, Aline. There were also figures on Friday to say that repeat presentations of homelessness in Dundee are three point nine percent, which is lower than the average. So we're doing good work there, that we're actually finding people houses and they're not representing as homeless. I've got a comment from councillor Lynne.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. I have to say, I think this is probably the most inspiring and heartening report that I have seen in many years come to this council. I've bored everyone in the past with my story about how I came to work with Dundee, sorry, in Dundee with homeless people in the mid nineties. And at that point, there was a real reliance on hostel accommodation. And some of it was so dilapidated that it was, it wouldn't be an exaggeration to call it Dickensian. One in particular, where, you know, the staff did a very good job, but the accommodation was basically at that time mattresses laid out on a floor, maybe, you know, two, three feet apart. And, you know, to have come from where we were then to where we are now is just so inspiring. And there's so much detail in this report, there's so much work going on that, you know, I would hope that things can only get better. Because hostel accommodation, while it's fine for putting a roof over your head, it's not really the best way to resolve the issues that perhaps led you becoming homeless in the first place. So the move away from that to the Housing First model, which was celebrated very much by myself and councillor Crookshank when it was announced, is really, really good. And to pick out that tenancy sustainment rate for the Housing First project, a tenancy sustainment rate of eighty-six percent is incredible, given the people that are being assisted with housing and are part of that programme are those with the greatest needs and the greatest number of issues. So absolutely fantastic, well done. And I'm not exaggerating. But, you know, what I said about the start, but it's so inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lynne. Those comments are very much appreciated. I'm sure the staff will appreciate what you're saying. They've been working through incredibly difficult times and they've made real progress. Councillor McHugh, you've had a few entries here. Is this a very brief comment? Are you happy to approve?
No, I'm okay. I'm quite happy, thank you.
Thank you. Veronica, next item.
Item number six, Environmental Improvements, twenty twenty-two. This report is for your approval.
So this is very good news. This is a number of environmental improvements as part of the twenty-two twenty-three programme. The specific locations and projects are detailed in your report, but they're about gate replacements within Roseangle, Baxter Park and Dudat Park play areas, improvements at Burkhill Cemetery to reduce flooding and improve drainage. There'll be tree planting, bollard installation and improvements to the car park, creation of biodiversity at Denamains and Baxter Park and also improved fencing and gates at Caird Park. The committee is asked to approve these proposals and I'll ask Mr Boyle if he would like to say anything in addition.
Thanks, Convenor. I think you've covered everything, so just leave it at that. Thank you.
I could see Bailey MacPherson, would you like to come in?
Yeah, I would. And like you, I'd like to welcome these coming forward. In particular, in relation to the replacement gates and play parks, I'm very pleased to see Roseangle coming forward. I actually first raised concerns about the condition of the gate at Roseangle in June twenty twenty-one. And it's been something of an ongoing issue. So it's very good to see that happening. I do want to make a comment though, that there is a substantive issue. And Mr Boyle, be aware, I'm not really looking for a response today at committee, but grateful to be kept updated. I've had various backwards and forwards with officers regarding deteriorating play equipment at the playpark and assurances in relation to getting that attended to. I appreciate, Convenor, before the time you were on the council, but the community really was responsible for achieving that fantastic upgrade of the playpark, round about twenty, about fifteen, fourteen, fifteen from memory. And pulling together all the funding, or most of the funding, council putting a little bit, but the bulk of it was the community and including Sports Scotland assisting. So I'm very keen indeed to ensure that the play equipment is kept in good order. And I'm sure Mr Boyle and his colleagues will be doing all they can to ensure that happens.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. Councillor Short.
Thank you, Convenor. Just a wee thank you to Mr Boyle and his team. I met with the friends of Baxter Park and we had a long conversation about a lot of the feedback that we had from constituents and the wider community with regards to Baxter Park and delighted to see that it's coming through. I also have a constituent of mine who is really the biggest fan ever of the Denamains. So I think she will be jumping from the ceilings when she hears this one. And she happens to have a family member in the council, so I've already emailed saying this is coming. Can you let her know? Because it's been something that she's been really keen to see for a long, long time. And really, really appreciate that's happening. I think it's changed a lot since days gone by. And I think there was a wee bit of a nod to the fact that Trottick Ponds have always had a wee bit of the love more than that area. So she will totally be beside herself happy about that. So thank you so much for all that work that's going in. It's very much appreciated.
So I take it that the committee is happy to approve these improvements. Yep. Veronica, can we go to item seven?
Item seven on the agenda, that's tenders received by the head of design and property. This report is for your approval.
So we are seeking approval of tenders received to undertake investment in the sheltered housing complex at Tulladelf and Watson Street. Fire and safety improvements in our multi-storey developments and capital repairs following fire damage at St Columbus Gardens. I'd like to bring in Neil Martin to add anything to the report, to go through the tenders.
Chair Neil is on annual reports. I think it would be helpful if perhaps the client side could introduce the report instead.
Is that you, Robin?
No, I think it would be someone from Tony Boyle's section perhaps.
All right, sorry. Okay, I could see Louise, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Convenor. These are housing tenders, so I'm happy to introduce them.
Okay, thank you.
So as the convenor has set out, there is two improvements within our sheltered complexes. These are external upgrades and the Sheltered Housing Team and our Housing Asset Management Team have consulted with sheltered tenants to help design these improvements within our complexes. The improvements within the MSDs are supported from Scottish Fire and Rescue. So we carried out a joint inspection with Scottish Fire and Rescue and recognised that these improvements could be made in terms of fire safety. So the tender sets out that we would look to progress that forward. And finally, the fire damage in a block flats, this has resulted in the immediate works required in this block.
Thank you, Louise. I have a question from councillor Creighton.
Thank you, Convenor. I welcome the replacement decking at Tulldef, Tulldef, so it says Sheltered Lounge. But can I highlight the need to improve access to the complex? Bailey MacPherson and I have raised concerns that the path network hasn't been maintained as regularly as it should have been with loads of weeds, given the slope. That's really worry for elderly tenants trying to access the complex. Can I get assurances about this? It'd be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Yes, of course. I'm happy to get officers to go and look specifically at that access area if they're not already subject to those inquiries and feedback.
I can't see any other questions. So do I take it that we are happy to approve these tenders? And with that, I'd like to say that's the end of our neighbourhood services committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, folks. Thank you, Roger. Willie, we'll just get on with the business. Over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
declarations? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Being no declarations takes you onto item two, which is the city plan for Dundee. Do you have to agree to the recommendations?
I'm going to apologise in advance because my children seem to be causing some chaos at the bottom of the stairs. It's very noisy from my end, so you might not pick it up or you might. This item obviously sets out the context for how the wider city is going to work to alleviate the challenges the city faces as well as aspiring for the city to be the best possible place it can be. I hope you agree that the format of the report is exceptional and my thanks to the comms team who have supported this work and helped deliver, I think, a very readily read city plan for the city. I think what you can also see within the report, which is important to highlight, is that there is some clarity around the shared ambitions that we have. This, of course, is not the council's plan, this is the city plan and involves a wider set of stakeholders. And it's in that thread, I suppose, that I'm very supportive of how we take this forward in partnership with those wider partners within the city. I am seeing, I think, Daniel, you were first, councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr Convenor. Can I ask about how robust targets in later years are? How are they calculated and is there evidence to substantiate them? There's an example on page twenty-one, the figures for the percentages of Dundee workforce employed that is given currently is seventy-one point three percent. Target year ten, a significant increase to nearly seventy-nine percent. How was that calculated? How confident can we be predicting these sort of future targets?
Thanks very much, councillor Coleman. Really good question. And I think we always have a lot of discussion, it's fair to say, Andrea, over the contents of this report in terms of some of the metrics, the measurements and also where the information comes from. So I'll let you come in and respond in the first instance. Andrea?
Yeah, so with the targets, they should be looked at as their ten years targets. And we do have quite a robust conversation about setting challenge and targets. So a lot of officers are involved in those discussions. What we're trying to do is where there's targets that have got more scope, we're saying that we're trying to do five percent where increases each year. So we will review targets at one, three, five years and we will adjust them as necessary. But we do set ambitious targets. I think Robin might want to come in because he's been involved in that particular one.
Thanks, Andrea. Yes, just to confirm, there has been good dialogue between the two teams. And I think the figure there for the year ten target is derived from the Discover Work Strategy, which was recently published by the Discover Work Partnership. And that sets out a much bigger overview of employability in Dundee and a desire to increase the percentage of people in work and set some specific targets. So I'm quite happy to circulate a copy of that so the members have a bit more visibility of the calculations which underpin that target.
Thanks very much, Robin. I think that's helpful. And I see Daniel nodding. So that's very much appreciated. Bailey MacPherson, you are next on the list.
Thanks. It's actually not unrelated to that. It's really about on the same page, page twenty-one. And it's about the gross weekly pay and the target. I'm just really wondering, does that take into account an estimate of inflation? Or is that what the targeting week in year ten is based on current prices? Because that's the only really current wages, if you like, because that's the only meaningful way we can, you know, we can work out if it's, if it's meaningful or not, I suppose, is my point. So, yeah. But I'm very grateful to Robin's, you know, comment that, you know, that some more information about the way these things are calculated is very helpful because as you get to later years, the more difficult it becomes really obviously. But as I say, I was just really wondering if I could have some clarification on the inflation aspect of that.
Absolutely. I'll ask officers to come in. They might need to come back to you on the specifics because I know some of this data comes from National Stats and there are very complex calculations that go into some of this. But Andrea?
Yeah, I will double check that one and I'll come back with the exact details. I don't think it takes inflation into account, but I will double check that and I'll come back with how exactly it's calculated. We've got that metadata behind the scenes, so I'll bring that back to you.
Yeah, very helpful, Andrea. Logic tells me it wouldn't take inflation into account. But that said, it would be useful to get the clarification. So grateful for that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And you're right to highlight it because I think we're all acutely aware that, I hate using this phrase because we all collectively keep using it, but headwinds, we're all facing significant headwinds across all of these various KPIs. And I think the challenge is making sure that those stats are meaningful in the way that you suggest and making sure they represent where we're at and where we're going and our cognisance of that. Bailey Keenan. You're on mute, Kevin.
Sorry about that. It's in relation to page twenty three and recycling. I obviously noticed the figures aren't quite where we'd want them to be. And wondering if there's any other initiatives about how that would be driven up. You know, we've had to do cleanups in areas within the city. Obviously, we know that people are struggling financially and we've had a bit of a windfall when I look at the later papers in relation to the Revenue Monitoring Report and in relation to the GATE Fee MVB. And wondering whether it's something that we should be thinking of spending a bit more money to drive that figure up in recycling, given that, you know, it's got to be a strong message coming from council that recycling is really important. So, you know, wondering if it's, if it's something that officers are considering about, you know, how best would drive the figures up.
Thanks, Kevin. I'll bring in officers in just a moment, but I think it's a really important question and one I'm very mindful of as deputy chair of the Climate Leadership Group, which obviously encompasses more than just the council. And I think there's a number of initiatives underway on the education piece, which is absolutely integral to how we approach things going forward. So everything from our Eco Schools Programme and working with schoolchildren and the power of pester power to the work that's been undertaken by Keep Scotland Beautiful and others and the communication, visible communication that has resulted, which Tony and his team have helped provide and set out and take forward as well. But Tony, do you want to come in and say a little bit more on the approach being taken?
Yes, thanks, convenor. And thanks, Bailey Keenan. Yeah, very pertinent this to what you were just discussing earlier on in terms of, you know, how government influence will cover a lot of this coming forward. Committee will recall, I think as recently as at the last round of committees, updated committee on the two complementary consultations that Scottish Government have just recently concluded around circular economy and the waste route map to twenty twenty five and beyond, where there'll be a whole new strategic and legal framework set about how to achieve realistic recycling through a whole range of initiatives. And that will be led, as I said, nationally. But running in close contact and in concert with that is indeed our own local initiatives. And we've detailed into committee before and we'll be doing that again. And we will be looking at probably at future scrutiny committees as previously discussed. And that's things like around Take Pride. We've got a whole raft of strategic initiatives taking forward under the guise of recycling. We've got our own waste and recycling strategy action plan, of which we've got forty one actions and a whole range of other local initiatives. And as you said, convenor, we know a lot of that is driven by the important work we need to do within schools and bringing young children with us on this journey. And to echo what Bailey Keenan had said earlier on, yeah, a lot of that stuff is around, some of the initiatives have already started this year with Fairland Laughing and try to replicate that, do more of the same, but do it better to increase this recycling rate going forward.
Thanks very much, Tony. That's really helpful. And again, we can also look back at the report that was taken mid-August just last month, which set out some of that context and some of the work that's been undertaken. So thanks for that. I see no other questions on this items. Can this be agreed? Thank you very much. Move on to the next. Willie?
Yeah, thank you very much. Item three then, locality leadership scheme and local community planning report. Just to give you recommendations.
Hopefully this report is self-explanatory. Obviously, it's really important in terms of how we connect and continues to build the relationships within our communities. And there are important milestones in taking forward that relationship, empowering our communities to make decisions that better reflect their needs, wants and aspirations, and also how we connect them more into the wider agenda that we talk about during the course of committee. And of course, the report that we've just had, which is just as important to the wider city as it is to individual communities as well. There's a few questions, so I'll come to councillor Coleman first.
Thanks again, Mr convenor. I've been liaising with officers outside of committee about the hub model referred to in the report for Shorthmartin and the Shorthmartin Plan. I have concerns about the engagement with the community. And there's real concern about the curtain library provision going forward. A report placed before this committee before the election, the twentieth of September twenty twenty, agreed for public consultation to be carried out on how the curtain model would be set up and operated to best meet the needs of the various stakeholders to allow them a trial phase to take place in twenty twenty one. I entirely understand for obvious reasons that the twenty twenty one deadline was not met. But constituents have contacted me with concerns that the decision has effectively been made before any consultation has been undertaken. There's also frustrations that there has been very little contact with the local management group and the staff at the library who are feeling left in the dark about all of this. The local community plan must give reassurances to the local community that engagement is real and local community, local people, sorry, are actually being listened to. And I appreciate the assurances that such engagement will be meaningful. Community views, including the community and local management group, will be listened to and their views will be paramount in any decisions. I have had assurances with some officers via email with this committee. But in terms of a timeline for consultation and who will be consulted with, however, for a matter of public transparency, can officers please confirm that the twenty twenty report agreed for a trial phase to take place and did not approve a permanent move of the curtain library? That as per seven point two of the same report, meaningful consultation engagement will take place with the local management group and LCPP. In my opinion, preferably by way of the attendance of an officer at one of their meetings. And finally, that after the trial has been completed, the matter will return to this committee for consideration and decision in respect of ongoing provision of the curtain library.
Thanks for the question, Daniel. And although it's not strictly relevant in the sense that the item before us is the wider strategy, I will indulge you. Can I just come back? And I don't need officers to come in and clarify. The stated position of the council as agreed per the report is exactly as you just outlined. That is the policy position of the council. That is the agreed position of the council and that work will be undertaken. And a further report come forward to committee at the appropriate time. So what is set out in that committee report is the stated position of this council. And that is the basis in which officers are empowered to take forward the conversation. So I don't, I don't need officers to confirm that because that is the agreed position. And hopefully my reassurance provides you with that certainty. I'll come to councillor Duncan next.
Thanks, convenor. Just looking at page fifty one. And under the fly column, I have to confess a slight out of body experience because if you go one, two, three, four columns down, the first two comparison with data from the rest of the West End ward. So it proving that it's not only me that makes mistakes in copying and pasting, but hey ho. So on the back of that, there's two actual questions. Under the what will we do thing, quite welcome mention of support for the café pilot in Barren Hill. I'd like details about that. And then further down, it says, develop a range of opportunities for communities to be better engaged and influence community matters. And that's a worthy aspiration, but I'm just looking for some details of how that might actually be achieved.
Okay, thanks very much, Craig. I'll come to officers to provide an initial response. I think on any specific ward based questions might be better followed up with all ward members after the meeting if there's specific detail that you're looking for. But can I perhaps bring in officers at this point? So Nikki, is it yourself to respond to that point on engagement?
Yes, I think I'm going to agree with you there that it would be best for me to speak to Christine Ray, the communities officer in the ferry and come back to with ferry members on with a specific answer on those specific questions as to exactly what will be taken forward there.
That's fine by me, but I'd just be interested in the actual examples of proposals.
Okay. Thanks very much, Craig. And obviously for all the members of that area. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convenor. Mine isn't actually area specific. It's really about the point in four point three point three about the each community planning partnership being led by a locality leader. Now, at the moment, a senior officer of the council chairs one, you know, a particular LCPP. And what's not very clear from this report, if I'm being perfectly frank about it, is what's the difference? What's the difference between this locality leader and what the, the current chairs are doing? What's the difference in remit? And what specifically are the sort of officers? Or are we looking out with the council for these locality leaders? And I think it's a bit thin on that, if I'm being perfectly honest. I mean, I have some views about the LCPPs because I think they need a bit of a refresh. And I think there's a complete lack of knowledge of them amongst the public. I often will put something on social media saying, Michael and I attended the West End LCPP tonight. But I'm not sure that generally the public are aware of what a local community planning partnership is. And I do think as well, we, we do have to look as well about attendance and engagement from officers. This isn't a criticism, but I do feel that, for example, if somebody represents a department or for example, the NHS, there's no particular reason if that officer cannot attend. And I'm not referring necessarily to council officers because we have partners, partner organisations, NHS, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. I have to say, their attendance in the West End is absolute exemplary. I have to say, Please Scotland and so on attending as well. And I do think it would be useful because it's far better for, in terms of the feedback and the debate, if someone representing a particular area of work cannot attend, that there's a substitute arrangement because that doesn't ever seem to happen. But as I say, my issues are about what's the difference between, in reality, what is the difference between this locality leader and the current chair? And what are we going to do to wider, you know, promote them in a more wider sense? And also, can we have an arrangement of substitutes so that we have maximum attendance in terms of the various areas that we want to discuss at a local level?
You've muted yourself, John. Oh, I took, I thought I took myself off mute. I just muted myself. Thank you for pointing that out. No, I think extremely valid questions. I'll bring in officers in just a moment. But to offer an initial response, I think there is probably broad agreement in the need to continue to make sure that these various forums are not only fit for purpose, but doing all they possibly can in terms of that wider engagement. And there's always a role to do there in terms of that wider participation and explaining what the LCPPs are there for and who they are for. But I'll bring in Greg initially and then I'll come to Elaine, if that's all right. Greg?
Thanks, convenor. And thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the questions. Just to give you clarity, that the locality leaders will be senior officers within the council. There will be some changes that we hope to communicate this week just regarding exactly who those locality leaders will be. And the rationale for the change is to highlight that it's more than just chairing a local community planning partnership. What we're looking to do is for senior officers to play a key role within the community. And as the title describes, be that locality leader representing the council. So it's simply a modernisation. All of the leaders will come from the council and from senior officer posts. If I can, convenor, I'd like to just pass over to Elaine just to answer those other two questions around the promotion of the local community planning partnerships. And just also regarding the further comment about arrangements for substitutes, convenor.
Thanks very much for that. Elaine?
Thank you, convenor. Absolutely. I think it is really, really important that we promote the structures going forward. And I think having locality leaders will help us to do that. I think it's important that they have a profile, as the chief executive has said, within the localities. And I think that will make a huge difference and absolutely support the issue about substitutes. It is something that we have tried to be mindful and remind agencies and organisations and indeed our own officers that if they can't attend, that they ensure there are substitutes. Some are better than others. But it's something that we will continue to ask the council leadership team to support us in. Nikki, I don't know if there's anything you would like to add?
Okay.
Just to say, the rationale for the refresh here is partly to make the local community planning partnerships perhaps more meaningful. So if you look through the local community plans, they are far more now about reducing inequalities across our different communities and taking kind of firm action to do that. And what we're expecting is the locality leaders to take a key role in doing that, but also making what happens in the local community plans and the local community planning partnerships perhaps more meaningful to the communities around them as well. So absolutely, we'll be looking to do regular updates and publicising of what LCPPs do, but also the opportunities for local people to come and get involved in what's happening. And I think as well, that doesn't necessarily need to be at the local community planning partnership every time. But if you're volunteering at a local food bank or something, you're contributing towards the local community plan and just making people aware of that kind of contribution they're making to both the priorities in their locality and across the city. So I think there's a bit of work to be done just to connect all of that. Absolutely.
Thanks for all those contributions. Fraser?
Yeah, I'm grateful for the responses and the reassurance around engagement and substitutes because I think both are helpful. What I would say in relation to the locality leaders is I think it will be useful to keep that under review, to get feedback from elected members as to how that actually works in practice. Because the reality, I mean, I speak as I find, we've had various chairs over the years. Frankly, they've all done a good job. They've all, you know, in relation to the remit that they've been given. But the, but as I say, it'll be interesting to see if the, you know, the change from chair to locality leader makes a meaningful change and it'll be useful to basically report back on that in due course to committee.
Thanks very much. And just to say, I think the addition of the kind of leadership model, which would be chaired by Greg, is helpful as well in making sure that there is that level of accountability and make sure that we're doing all that we can to make those, the most out of those roles, I suppose. I'll bring in councillor McHugh next and then councillor Elnakla. Dorothy?
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm a wee bit concerned about the makeup of LCPPs in terms of it being, them being kind of top heavy with organisations and groups. If you look at the, in the Community Empowerment Act, you know, the fifteen organisations and groups should be sitting down the table, plus any other body, third sector, private sector or community organisation. I mean, these people don't, I've sat on two LCPPs. These people don't regularly come to the meetings. But my plea is in terms of local community members. I think LCPPs should be made much more user friendly, accessible for members of the local community. I understand they are public meetings and perhaps they could be promoted a bit more as that so that we do hear more of the voice of local people. I've sat on LCPPs as a member of a community group and now I sit as a local councillor. And for, for members of community groups, you know, having all these organisations and statutory bodies sitting around the table can be a wee bit overwhelming. And I understand why they're there. But this is just a plea to make the LCP meetings more known about, more public and more friendly for individual members of the community and community groups to feel comfortable coming along too.
Thanks very much. Dorothy, I could see Nikki nodding along, so he's taking note. And we'll make sure that that is fed back to the teams taking that work forward. And effective communication is always critical, no matter what the issue we're talking about. So. So completely agree with you on that point. Councillor El Nakla?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the locality leaders are a really good opportunity to shake up a little bit and do that bit of outreach work. I had a meeting with Nikki recently. And it was really positive in the sense that actually we can't expect communities to come to us. So if we want that diversity that Dorothy's talking about and that inclusion, you know, we as council leaders and have that responsibility as well to reach out to communities that aren't using those groups and inviting them to come along. I know with our West End one, you know, Fraser, Michael, myself and Bill are all really keen to invite lots of organisations to come along and to see that inclusion and diversity. And it can't just be a tick box. It very much has to be that we are incorporating all the communities into the plans. And when we see that not happening, we have to really take that responsibility to change it and to make sure all communities are heard.
Thanks very much, Nadia. Very wise words indeed. Thank you all. I think that is all the contributions at this point. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you. Willie?
Thank you very much. Take you on to item four, the Corporate Services Service Plan Progress Report. This is for noting.
Again, this is the regular update that we receive on the Corporate Services Service Plan. You'll see a whole host of information and KPIs within that. So I'll just open it up for any questions or comments on this report. Bailey Keenan, Kevin?
Yeah, thanks. It's page 70 in relation to cost of collection council tax per dwelling. And there was a target of £8.32 per household and its performance levels to date are 11.23, some £2.91, what a difference. I'm wondering what measures there is in place to bring that a bit closer to target? Given that my calculation, that'd be a considerable amount of money of income that we're not getting at the moment to be able to use on something else.
Thanks very much for the question, Kevin. I'll just bring in officers. Sorry, I'm trying to look at the list of officers and attendants. Who wants to volunteer? Save me time. Robert, you're on mute.
Apologies, convenor. Jackie Cabell's probably best placed, convenor. Apologies.
Great. Sorry, hadn't got to Jay yet. Jackie?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, convenor, and thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question. Yes, there's been quite a bit of work done on this indicator, and it is one that we're paying close attention on. This is obviously, the data there is the 2021 figure. 2122 has come down significantly, and we've looked at, you know, different staffing that we've got within the service. We've, you know, changed around methods that we're looking at to make the team more productive. And that's all led to a reduction in that target. But we do still have a bit of work to bring it down to where we want it to be.
Thanks, Jackie. Kevin, are you happy with that?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much. No other questions on this? Can I take this report as agreed, please? Thanking you. Willie?
Thanks very much. Item five, then, improves the Nippon Electric Company Software Solutions Revenues and Benefits Report. You're asked to give the proposal as outlined.
Okay, I'll just go straight to questions. So Bailey McPherson?
It's just a brief comment, because I know Mr Colgan has this in hand. You'll be aware that I've raised the need to have a, frankly, a more transparent way of presenting, where we use a framework for award. I feel quite strongly that we need a transparent way of showing that best value has been achieved. And clearly, this is like the old method. I know Mr Colgan has taken my point on board. All this says is that the Crown Commercial Services Framework, RM 3821, has been used. And obviously, I'm looking forward to the day when we can have a little bit more information so that in a transparent and open manner, we can show that best value has been achieved in all cases. It's simply a comment. I'm not really looking for a response because I know Mr Colgan does, has taken on board a previous time, the concern I've raised.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Well, I haven't heard his reassurance, so I'm going to ask him to provide it again. Greg?
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. So yes, we're just working through the comments you've provided. And one of the things we're looking to do in addition to text being added to reports is to provide an elected member briefing in due course that outlines the types of frameworks and the benefits of the frameworks. But we will also be looking to add text to the report because you did make the point about the public who are looking at the reports and how do we ensure best value and how do we ensure the benefits on things like community wealth building? So that is in hand and I hope to be able to update committee shortly on those two actions that I've agreed with officers to take forward.
Thanks, Greg. Yep, that's an excellent response, Greg. I'm most grateful. Thanks.
Okay, with that, can we agree this item? Thank you very much. Willie, back to you.
Okay, item six, improves the revenue monitoring report. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, self-explanatory. So any questions or comments on this? Nope. Okay, committed. Oh, sorry. Item being too quick. Councillor Shears?
Cheers. Thankfully, it's just a quick question and might well be jumping the gun. And so in paragraph 6.1, it mentions an assumption of 5% for teachers' pay. And given that that's now been rejected by the EIS, do we have an updated assumption on what that pay might be? And a kind of secondary question on that, do we have any indication whether Scottish Government are going to be helping with funding that additional pay award for teachers when it comes?
Thanks very much for the question, and you're right to reflect on that. And obviously, at the time of pulling together reports, things do move on in the intervening period. So we have had that rejection from teaching unions. I think it's fair to say, from an officer perspective, we don't have a concrete position at this point in time. And there's further discussion that needs to be undertaken at a national level through COSLA, et cetera. But I'll bring in Greg initially, please. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convenor, and thanks, councillor Shears. So as councillor Alexander has outlined, the information before the report before you is based on the best knowledge and detail that council currently has around that 5% offer, which we now know has been rejected. As and when we get further information around potential levels of wage increases, then we will have to reflect that at the various times as well as any clarification and support from Scottish Government or not. But the report before you was written at a point where those were the assumptions that we were working under and indeed the level of funding that the council would require to provide on top of the additional funding Scottish Government have added for the 5%.
Thanks very much, Greg. Robert, is there anything you want to add? No, okay, thank you. I see no further questions on this item. So can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Thanks very much. Item seven, then, improves the capital expenditure monitoring report. This is for noting.
Again, self-explanatory. So I'll just go straight to questions, comments. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convenor. A brief comment about the information at 5.2.13 on page 99. And it's regarding the Harris Academy Extension. I don't think officers were meaning to be disingenuous, but when they say the reprofiling of the budget does not affect the completion date within the financial year 2324, the fundamental point is that the completion date has actually altered. As I understand it, and perhaps officers can confirm that I'm correct, the original intention was to have the extension in place for the start of the academic year 202324, if you like, in the summer of 23, and it's now to be in October. And I was just really wondering if officers can confirm that the October date is the correct one and that they are confident that that will actually be reached?
Thanks for the question. I'll bring in Robin Pressford at this point. Robin?
Chair, many thanks, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the question. Normally, as a capital programme progresses, the certainty grows as you get through each stage of the development. So we've tried to manage expectations and not give precise dates. I think the former of the two dates given was one which may have been provided informally, but that hasn't been a specific date for opening unless I'm mistaken. So we will keep members updated regularly on the data. I think Neil Martin's previously said that he intends to do that through the school liaison group so that education is the client leading on briefing, rather than having multiple different points of contact within the council.
Thanks, Robin. I think fundamentally, we'll come back with clarity around that question, Fraser. That's probably the best thing to do.
That's very helpful. I would say that the date, I can tell you, both dates have been discussed at the Harris Academy Parent Council, and so it was out there. However it got there, it was out there. And there's an understanding, there's not criticism or whatever. We understand where it is. But we'd obviously be very keen to see it delivered for October of next year. And I would just make the point, it'd be really useful to be kept updated, you know, I and my ward colleagues to be kept updated on progress. It is appreciated. And, you know, obviously, the extension will be very welcome, given the capacity issue and the bursting at the seams capacity issue of the school. And we very much look forward to it being delivered.
Thanks very much, Fraser. Okay. I see no further questions or comments on this. So again, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
You're asked to meet then, before you's annual treasury management activity report. This is for noting.
Again, this is our regular update report and obviously highlights that saving of 3.3 million pounds was made from a combination of interest and principal repayment savings. I think the challenge is there for us going forward in terms of mirroring those savings as we continue to see some of the pressures and interest rates rise. So thanks to the team for what they've delivered and fingers crossed that they can continue to deliver going forward as well. Any questions or comments on this item? Nope. Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you. Again, Willie?
Okay, the mini item, item nine, then, before you's the financial outlook and strategy. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Thanks very much. Yep, chat's going wild already and I've not even made the introduction. I think it's very clear from this report that we are set to face some significant challenges. And that, of course, is replicated right across the country. And I think what we will continue to see is significant pressure as a result of a whole myriad of different factors. And this outlook and medium-term financial strategy, as we've already seen, seeks to ensure that the council continues to balance the budget whilst also delivering the services that the people of the city deem to be important to them and their lives. I think it's really important to say and caveat from the outset that even within the document where it sets out assumptions, they are just that, they are assumptions and not decisions. And it's very clear to me and hopefully to you that ultimately, many of the decisions encompassed within those assumptions will be made by politicians on Dundee City Council during things like the budget setting process. So I want that to be very clear to everyone on the call. Now, I can see that there's some questions and I've got two amendments, it seems. So I will come to the questions first and then I'll come to amendments. So councillor Coleman?
Thanks again, Mr convenor. On page 138, there are projections on energy costs to 2627. Are officers confident, given the volatile situation that is going forward to 2627, will be reversed?
It's a good question, a difficult question to answer. I think I will bring officers in. But I think it's safe to say that all of the assumptions are based upon best estimates, projections and information that's provided by national bodies and national organisations and government. So I think it's fair to say that officers are making their best assumptions that is possible at this point in time. But things can vary, and we've seen over the last couple of years how things can change fairly rapidly. And if you just look at what's happened in the last four days with the pound sterling, I think that illustrates the point of how things can invariably move very rapidly, either negatively or positively. But Robert, do you want to come in?
Thanks, convenor. I think what we've tried to do is to use the best information that's available to us. But as you've just highlighted, it's a fast-moving environment we're in. We may well benefit from the measures introduced to support businesses that were announced just last week. But we haven't yet been able to look at the detail of that and see. So it's our best estimate what we've got at the moment. And the chart on the previous page shows the range of uncertainty that we're working with across a number of factors. And we've singled that energy because it is one of the areas where there is greater risk that that figure will change. As we move towards setting the budget in March, not March, February, we should get increased certainty as we bring the things together. And we'll come back and give you updates as that goes.
Thanks very much, Robert. That's really helpful. Daniel, are you happy with that? Yep. Okay, we'll come to the amendments next. So Bailey Sawyers?
I think Bailey Keenan might have a question. I don't know if you want to take that first, John?
I would have made a comment, and I have mentioned that I've got a motion that I'm happy to be circulated.
Okay, thanks very much. Bailey Sawyers?
Yeah, well, if my amendment could be circulated as well, I'll be fairly brief since it's now pitch black outside. I was just going to initially quote some newspaper headlines, and you can maybe try and guess which newspaper this is. Traders Bet on UK Emergency Interest Rate Rise. How Significant Is The Sterling Crisis? UK Business Based For Higher Costs As Sterling Falls. Economic Consensus Is Crumbling But The Bank Of England Has Not Got The Memo. Parting Has Shaken Investor Confidence In The UK. Parting's Ideological Approach Will Leave The Treasurer With No Money. Now, that's not some radical left-wing newspaper. That's the, you know, House Journal of the City of London, i.e. The Financial Times. And they're certainly not looking at anything particularly greedy going forward. The Washington Post, British Pound Falls To New Low Against The Dollar After Taxes Slashed. I also printed some stuff off from The Guardian, but I think you'll probably agree that I should just set that aside because there seem to be 23 pages of it. I don't really want to go through all that at this time of night. But I just wanted briefly, I read an article in the New Statesman this morning, which was quite illustrative of the financial position we're facing ourselves in. So it's saying, since the 2008 financial crisis, and that's the period that reference in the amendment, the UK economy has grown at an average annual rate of just 1.5%, compared to 2.7% before the crash. And that's the second lowest growth rate of the G7 countries. The Resolution Foundation has charted by 2018, UK median disposable incomes were just 9% higher than in 2005, compared to 40% higher in Germany, 39.8% in France. Slovenia and Poland are among the European countries now projected to record higher living standards than Britain this decade. So it's a pretty grim situation we find ourselves in. And I'm going to just sum up because I realise it's quite late. You know, there's talk made of, there's lots of tax cuts and that's going to affect everybody and everybody's going to get more money. So the Institute for Fiscal Studies looked into the reversal of the national insurance rise and found that the poorest households will gain £7.66 a year. I'll just repeat that. £7.66 a year from the measure, while the richest ones gain £1800 a year. Now, this is a chancellor who's brought forward, and it's not called it a budget because I believe it was a budget, it would be subject to scrutiny by the Office for Budget Responsibility, which has been able to do that. But the 23 pages that I've not read out to you from The Guardian have numerous economic commentators, numerous fund analysts, people who are pretty, you know, sober people reflecting on the market and overwhelmingly are condemnatory of the situation we're in. So with 12 years of absolute shocking economic mismanagement of the country, and in the past four days, it's got immeasurably worse. So I'm not going to say any more, convenor, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Bailey Sawyers completely agree with that summary. And clearly, you know, much of what we've discussed this evening in terms of reference to headwinds and challenges, much of which sits and rests at the door of Tendin Street. But I can see that councillor Dawson has agreed formally second you. So I will come to Bailey Keenan on that basis. But I can see that councillor Dawson has agreed formally second you, so I will come to Bailey Keenan on that basis. Bailey Keenan?
Convenor, perhaps, uh, these two motions could be somewhat merged together because ultimately, uh, you know, I haven't got an issue in, in relation to having to go at the Westminster Government based on, uh, the, the recent budget and how they've put the world in a bottle spin. Uh, you know, tax cuts to extremely rich people at a time, uh, and, and, you know, uh, a, a, a time where it's going to push up interest rates to affect the very people that we want to see addressing poverty for, uh, you know, I don't have an issue having to go with them and, and even taking the, this motion a bit further forward. But the, the, the reality is that the report itself makes pretty starbeaten. And, uh, we, you know, local government wasn't in a position to settle up the wage deal that was made or the demands of a wage deal was made, uh, upon them this year. And, you know, it still carries some burden that we've needed to find another one and a half percent more than we expected to find, even although the Scottish Government has come in with, uh, some additional funds to make that happen. Perhaps if the additional funds would have been available when we were setting a budget in February, then we'd have built a wee bit more into our wage deal and perhaps settled up on a bit less than what we have. But, you know, we have predicted inflation rates where they've got, you know, we could look at this report and question the assumptions that officers have made and perhaps might not think that they've added enough in for wages. Because the sort of yearly increase does not look like it's, it's very much when we've seen the sort of demands that were made on this year, uh, of, of people, uh, and in particular teachers, you know, knocking back five percent, health knocking back five percent, and everybody looking for that bit more. So I'm hoping that we could perhaps merge these two motions together now, having seen them. And, uh, I sort of look upon, uh, Bailey Sawyer to see if that's going to happen.
Uh, I'll come to councillor Shears first to second you. Councillor Shears?
Yeah, um, to be honest, I'm not, not going to say anything. I did have stuff written down, but it's stuck in the office that we can't get to at the moment following the overnight fire. So I'll just formally second, uh, what Bailey Keenan said.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I couldn't get myself off, uh, mute there. And I'll come back to Bailey Sawyers.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Um, I'm not really, um, inclined to support the Labour Amendment. I think it's just doing what they always do and is trying to put the blame for this at the Scottish Government when what we know it's the macroeconomic situation created by the Westminster Government that has created this overall situation. So I'd prefer to stick with the amendment that I tabled myself.
Yes, thank you very much for that clarity. So on that basis, we will move to the vote. So Willie, I'll hand over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the motion by Bailey Sawyers, seconded by Bailey Dawson, is as circulated. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Shears, is also as circulated. Convenor?
Motion.
Mr Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Mr El Nakla?
Motion.
Mr Flynn?
The motion.
Mr Hunter?
Motion.
Mr Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Mr Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers?
Motion.
Mr Short?
Motion.
Mr Smith?
Motion.
Mr Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
And with apologies, councillor Trickshank, councillor Finnegan?
Amendments.
Councillor McHugh?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Malone?
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen?
Amendment.
Councillor Shears?
Amendment.
Bailey Date?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
Amendment.
Mr Coleman?
Amendment.
Mr Creighton?
Uh, councillor Creighton can't, he was, uh, he, he had to rejoin the meeting and he can't get in, so he's not able to vote.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
Yeah, that's fifteen for the motion and twelve for the amendment. The motion's carried.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm off. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, that is the final item. So thank you very much for your participation and you.